Good evening and welcome to the 20th meeting for the Milton Planning Board of 2024. I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by the introduction of the Planning Board and our staff. If we can start and go around, Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Sean on Zoom.
Sean Fady, member.
And Meredith Hall, serving his chair this evening. Good evening and welcome to all. We can begin with our first item, which is our administrative items. And we have two sets of minutes, but I think, well, one, actually, you had some amendments to November 28?
Yes.
Did you circulate those?
Yep, I sent them to Julia and then she sent them out and they were, they were okay.
Okay, great.
But did we have another set that I missed?
And then?
She made some amendments at the last meeting that I put in and then I sent them out.
Oh, okay. But January 11th, maybe that's what I hadn't, okay. You probably had not had a chance to look at those, the January 11th?
Those were the ones that we amended during the meeting?
No, November 28th we amended during the meeting.
Okay, but the, the ones that you sent out, Julia and I had asked whether there was a red line version, I'm sorry, to which meeting though?
28th.
The 28th of November.
Right, okay. So I did, I did review those, okay.
I put, I wrote out what the change was in the email.
Right, so that was helpful. The red lines are easiest, but that was helpful to see that. Okay, so, so in the box or in our OneDrive, there was just minutes from the 28th? No?
On the 11th.
And the 17th.
Today I put in the 17th.
Yeah, I didn't see the box today, okay.
And did you have anything on the 11th? Any changes on those? I didn't see.
I'm sorry, so those are the ones that we are brand new, we didn't discuss at the last meeting? Sorry, no, I did not review those.
All right, so let's, so let's defer the meeting minutes for January 11th and the 17th to our next meeting. And if there's a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, November 28th?
So moved.
Second?
As amended, are those as amended?
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, we'll do a roll call since Sean, you're on Zoom. Maggie?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you. And for our next item, we, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce our staff. So let's go around and quickly do that before we get any further. Julia?
Julia, you got one quick?
And Tim?
Tim is unwell today, but I, Josh, I'm the Assistant Director.
Great, thank you and welcome for joining us on Zoom. All right, our next, then moving, is our discussion of next meeting dates. And we currently, just look at, we have a February 8th meeting currently scheduled. And then we are then looking to do our second meeting. Josh, do you have that date, just to confirm, the 22nd?
Yes, and there is also a site walk that you all need to determine a time for on the tag of February.
Correct. Correct. Yes, did everybody get that email on the site for a site walk?
Yes.
Is there a prefer, time preference on that?
Earlier the better for me.
Not from the applicants.
Right, from the Planning Board members.
I'm an early guy, so as early as you guys want to do it.
Okay.
Okay, start the day, so I don't know, nine o'clock?
Nine, is that?
It's good.
Okay.
9:00 AM, good with everybody? Okay, so Josh, if you can just pass that on to the applicant that we're requesting the site walk on Presrell Road to, yeah, great. To 9:00 AM, okay, great. And then we have, so we have the 8th, and then we currently have the next meeting scheduled for the 22nd of February. Okay.
Meredith, I won't be able to attend the 8th, the meeting for the 8th.
Okay, great. I think you had mentioned that before, so, all right. And so that we now, we have, Josh, do you have sort of some updates from the Planning Department?
I do, yes. Firstly, we teased at your meeting last week, or the week prior, that there were some grant updates to give you. Today, this afternoon, I was at the State House with Lieutenant Governor, where the town of Milton was awarded $140,000 towards engineering repairs down at Milton Landing. That was voted affirmatively by the Seaport Economic Council this afternoon, and they'll be circulating the grant award letter to us later in the week or early next week. This project is going to be done with high-end bonds to do the sort of necessary engineering to repair all of the seawall down in Milton Landing, as well as explore closing Captain's Landing, which is the rent at the southeast corner, which is the primary flood path for big tidings and storm surge from the Ponset into the landing and out into Flo Park. And even, you know, as sea level rise continues into the path of the mountain property. Though those repairs would be in concert with design for a new arena in line with the 2018 Lake of Mutation Committee's recommendations. The new arena will prioritize ADA accessibility as well as public access to water and electricity. Slips as well for rowing tenants like the Nippon's Rowing Club and Dexter Southfield Academy have also been prioritized in that design. It's a really exciting grant. One in six communities were awarded this year, but it did come with a caveat to all communities that are bonded that, that grant money is conditional on compliance with the MBTA communities. So depending on the vote of the 13th, we may not be eligible for this grant money. Other news is that I wanted to just quickly remind you all that NA PC is scheduled to come visit us on our February 8th meeting. John Fiala has some updates on East Milton Square mixed-use overlay zoning. And please, for folks online who live in East Milton, highly recommend you attend and tell your friends to attend.
Could you repeat that date? I'm sorry, could you repeat that date, Josh, again?
At your meeting on February 8th.
At the meeting on February 8th, perfect. That's exciting, too.
For that, the rest of my updates are relevant to items on the agenda. So that's it.
Fantastic, great. Thank you, Josh.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Two questions. Josh, at an upcoming meeting, would you be able to show a plan to the, to the board to depict the work that you described a moment ago down the landing?
There's, there's not a drawing of that proposal, the grant is to fund the engineering work. I can sort of mock up what is intended to happen. It's to repair and raise part of the seawall because it currently stands at about 11 feet above, sort of mid-high watermark, and the flooding is expected to be at about 13 feet. But we don't, we don't have this coming back yet, but that will come with the work.
Okay, okay. And that, that funding that we applied for which program is the?
That is the Seaport Economic Council. That's the fund that provided funding for the dredge study that we did that determined that there were high levels of lead, PCBs, and chromium in the water and soil surrounding Milton Landing.
Milton Landing.
Okay, so I clearly heard, I think, what you said is that you, you told today that receipt of those funds is subject to compliance?
Yes, the Lieutenant Governor spoke to all of us as grant awardees, and the award letter also states that receipt of funds is conditional on our compliance with MBTA communities.
And is that, is that funding source the Seaport Economic Council, one of the attached funds?
It is not. It is one of the myriad discretionary grants that the Governor's Office has jurisdiction over.
Okay, and when did you learn that compliance would affect this funding?
That was said that today is awarded, when they have approved this.
Okay, okay. Thanks for that clarification.
And just as a follow-up on that, I don't see that particular grant on the list of grant programs listed out that Tim sent to us.
Was that a list of grants that we have been awarded, or a list of relevant grants?
I think it's the list of relative, relative grants.
It's just titled the MBTA Communities Grant Programs.
It is not one of the listed programs, but as, as the Governor has stated, and as every sort of state official has stated, every discretionary grant is up for sort of being revoked as, as this one is given up in line status.
Question?
Yes.
You mentioned it was the Seaport Economic Council grant that was also used to fund the dredge study of the below-water soils. Do you know how much that was for, Josh?
I, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I think it was approximately the same at around $130,000.
Okay.
Okay.
Good question?
Yep, go ahead.
So Josh, you mentioned this project, you're giving priority to Dexter Southfield, as well as with the Nippon's River Rowing Club, they're kind of, you're considering those groups to use the waterfront, is there?
So the, the landing has a number of lots that have been bid out through a competitive RFP process. And the successful respondents to the various RFPs that have been out are the yacht club for the building at 25 Fourth Street, the historic Laka, Milton, Nippon's Rowing Club, which is also affiliated with the Milton High School Rowers, for Lot C, which is the furthest south, 5,000 square foot lot, and Dexter Southfield is successful there as well. The contract with Dexter has not been signed because their RFP was only approved a couple of weeks ago. But, but those are our three tenants.
And do you, or are you, is the yacht club in, I guess, communication with you when you're doing this work, or where do they fit in?
Yes, yeah, they, they are a tenant, as I said.
Okay, thanks.
And Josh, I had one question. Do you have that, the grant award, is something in writing that we were receiving? I'm assuming we're just, it's just not verbal, but do we have something in writing?
The allocation had to be voted on today by the council, though we were anticipating this, we were told to attend. So they couldn't officially send us our award letter until what was made today. But I did receive in writing from the Vice Chair of the Committee, the language that would be putting in each of the grant awards that clarifies that all of, all of these awards are conditional on compliance.
Okay, when is those, when are those funds to be awarded?
We're expecting the award letter to be given to us at some point next week. And then once we've signed our contracts, the special proposals will be given to us. It won't be before February 13th, though.
Right, exactly. So the funding is expected to be this year, in 2024?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Is it the kind of thing where if we fall out of compliance, we lose the money, and then we're back into compliance? We get the money again, or we have to reapply for it? How does that look?
I would say the, the funding is for the fiscal 24 round of grant applicants. If we fall out of compliance, I doubt that we will return into compliance by this fiscal year. I, I think if we are out of compliance, we will lose the money.
All right, is that a grant that the Planning Department applied for, Josh?
Yes, at the request of the Select Board's Milton Landing Committee.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other questions on that? All right, so if there's not anything else, Josh, we can now move on to Citizens Speak. And we would welcome anyone from the public or online. Josh, if you can let us know if there's somebody with their hand raised online who would like to speak. Great, welcome.
Evening, Chair Hall and everyone else. I speak to you tonight in my personal capacity, and I do so to urge you to support a yes vote.
We need your name and address.
Oh, yes, Mike Zullas, 69 Fairbanks Road, Z U L L A S. So I speak to you in my personal capacity to urge the Board to support a yes vote on the February 13th ballot question. The zoning that is at issue is this 28-page zoning that you're all well aware of. It meets the primary goal that has been identified by Milton residents for the last several years, which is to preserve the physical character of the neighborhoods. The related goal in this case was to do so to the minimum degree possible. Now, how does the zoning meet that goal? Here's an example. The proposed zoning protects East Milton Square from overdevelopment by requiring lower height, more open space, and bigger setbacks. It's a disincentive for developers, and that's right on page 23 of the zoning. As another example, the non-residential properties zoned on Granite Ave, which have been referred to as the 500 units, allow us to get credit for those units in those non-residential areas next to the highway, so we don't have to zone for them right in the middle of our neighborhoods. Specifically, the state-owned DPW lot on Granite Ave, which is across the four-lane state road from Portland Circle and Thistle Avenue, has three existing buildings on it. It's got, you know, storage tanks, it's got a lot of trucks, it's got a 200, 200 spot park-and-ride parking lot there, is not subject to the town zoning. The state could have done something different with it over the last several decades, regardless of our zoning, but it hasn't. The state could do something different with that lot, whether or not we include it in this proposed zoning. But if we include it, we get to count 368 units without zoning for them right in the middle of a neighborhood. And we protect against the potential of bigger buildings next door to existing houses in our existing neighborhoods. And if the state someday decided that it wanted to sell to a developer, if it tried to do that, never has, but if it did, the state would have to fix its four-lane road. It would have to put in stoplights, which would be a benefit to that Portland Circle neighborhood. The state or the developer would also have to fix all the water problems over there if it were to try to develop that site. It's the same with two Granite Avenue, up the road, about a half a mile, past the highway, right next to the Dorchester border. We zone for 171 units for an existing commercial building nearly a half a mile from any neighborhood in Milton. And we get to count those 171 units toward our minimum without zoning for those units in the middle of one of our neighborhoods. And that helps to preserve the physical character of our neighborhoods. This zoning that we're voting on also includes four pages of development standards, pages set 27 to 31, or every voter is going to read through this. And it includes site plan, design, and review requirements at pages 33 to 35 that will benefit all of our neighbors. All of that would be lost if we vote no. The truth is that this zoning is not a housing advocate's dream. And it's not the choice of residents who don't want to comply with the law right now. This is something in the middle. It preserves the character of our neighborhoods with the minimum compliance possible. That's what the residents have said they wanted, and that's what was delivered. That's why the town meeting members, as you all know, who reviewed and debated this, ended up approving it overwhelmingly. Now, what are the consequences of no vote? We heard from Mr. Eckert Lee about the recent grant. If we vote no on February 13th, as you know, the town will be in violation of the law. We'll face lawsuits from the Attorney General and others. Our zoning will be controlled by a judge or a special master who won't be interested in preserving the character of our neighborhoods. Funding will go down, costs will go up, and who's going to foot the bill? Who will be hurt by it? The Milton taxpayer, that's who. Now, the town administrator, along the lines of what Mr. Eckert Lee has mentioned, the town administrator has calculated the funding at risk from a, from a no vote. It's in three buckets, right? First, there are the specific grant programs in the law and in the guidelines under the law. Then there are the competitive discretionary grants that are controlled by the Governor, that's one of the things that Mr. Eckert Lee just referred to. And then there's the funding for the Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise known as the TIP funding. First, the specific grant programs listed in the law and the guidelines. MassWorks. MassWorks, we, we last received, is there, is there a limit?
Well, just following what the select, the selectmen did.
Oh, well, okay.
Keep going, keep going, but.
So, so I'll, I'll, I'll rush through. I just want to get through on the funding, just to kind of fill out what Mr. Eckert Lee mentioned.
Pages you got there, Mike.
No, it's, it's, it's double spaced, and this one is just a little conclusion, but I'll skip the conclusion if that helps. I just want to lay out what the funding is so we all know what it is, right? MassWorks, we received $1 million for that, that's for infrastructure, transportation infrastructure back in 2012. We could use that again. We received over the last five years $100,000 in the municipal vulnerability preparedness grants. We received $80,000 in community planning grants in 2023. We received $60,000 in local rapid recovery plan for East Milton in 2021. We received $40,000 for the East Milton mixed-use overlay in 2022. Those are some of the grants in bucket number one. Bucket number two are the competitive discretionary grants that are controlled by the Governor. In the past three years, Milton has benefited from these grants to the tune of more than $1.7 million in the areas of schools, DPW, health, information technology, and planning. Now, how do we know that these are at risk? We just heard, just today, the Seaport Economic Council awarded us that grant for $140,000 and for the seawall and to fix the dock. This grant was made subject to compliance. If we vote yes, we get it. If we vote no, we don't. And this is just the beginning. And finally, the TIP program, Transportation Infrastructure. Over the last few years, we've had $18 million allocated in road projects such as East Milton Deck and the Adams and Squanam intersection. We have future projects such as $19.4 million for reconstruction, reconstruction on 138 from Royal to Dollar Lane, $4.8 million for the intersection of 138 and Bradley. We have been informed by the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization, which evaluates projects for inclusion, that we will be penalized for non-inclusion, for non-compliance, rather, with the MBTA Communities Act. We're going to receive a five-point reduction in the competition for those, for those grants and where you end up on the list for those funds. So these are real, these are real consequences. They're real damage to our town and to our residents. I mean, I, you know, I have to say, I've, I've been involved in town affairs, or the Warren Committee, the School Committee, and the Select Board since 2009, except for one year. And, and it's always been a primary focus of mine to focus on the Milton taxpayer. Since 2009, we've had one override. It was in 2017 when I just, I, that was the one year I happened to be not involved in town government. And over the last several years, we've been able to do a lot of things in order to improve the lives of Milton residents. We use state funding for water and sewer projects and for our roads. We need a new fire station, so we're building. We needed a new broadband network, so we're building. We need a new animal shelter, so we're building. We need new schools, so we're designing. And we've done all of that, all of that, without raising one penny of additional taxes from the Milton, Milton taxpayers to do it. So I, I think, just to wrap it up, sorry to keep you. As town leaders, I think we, 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 we have an obligation to act in the best interest of the residents. And if we want to continue to do that, if we want to provide for the residents now while preparing ourselves for the future, and if we are concerned about the, the consequences of violating the law for our residents, and particularly for our taxpayers, then, then I hope you support voting yes on February 13th. So thank you. I'm sorry if I went over a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Mike, I just wanted to ask you a quick, did you say, you, you went through it quickly, so I'm trying to take notes. The 1.7 million in the competitive discretionary grants controlled by the Governor, over what time period was that?
That was since FY '21.
Okay, and the, the 18 million was over?
So the 18 million was, that was the East Milton Deck. That, that, that also includes the project for Squanam and Adams, which is already allowed. So, you know, we, we, we're not going to get hurt by that.
Right, okay.
The, the future projects we have in the hopper are the ones that are down at Dollar Lane and on Bradley Road. I, I don't think we're getting hurt on the, on the Squanam and Adams project, because I think that's already, that's already on the list. I think that's already, so I think we're okay on that one, but.
Do you know how much was for that?
For Squanam?
Yeah.
You know, I have it, it was, hold on one second.
Because I think that, and hasn't necessarily been.
Do we do Q and A during Citizens Speak?
I don't get not even acknowledged when I go to the Select Boards for Citizens Speak.
It's okay. So Squanam.
He's not here as a Select Board member, he's here as a resident.
Do we do Q and A for residents?
We, we can ask for clarification or comment.
I thought I knew what Squanam was.
Because I didn't think we had funding for.
Oh, here it is, yes. So the deck was 6.8 million, and Squanam is estimated at 2.2.
All right.
And then, we also had Randolph Avenue, Chick, at Chickatuba, at 9.1 million. You've had that one, which, again, that's been allocated. It's the future ones that we're really concerned about.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. That's okay. No, thank you. Josh, and do we have anyone in, on Zoom who would like to speak?
We, we did have a hand from Echo Burqist, but now I'm not seeing them in queue. So there are currently no hands.
Okay, great. Anyone else from the audience who I'm missing? Yes. Welcome, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Janet Farone, 71 Central Avenue, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2. And I'm, I'm also here tonight to speak strongly in favor of the MBTA Communities Act. And I'm not here because I think this is the best law I've ever seen. I'm here because of the repercussions of Milton breaking the law, not being in compliance, as will happen with voting no on the special election. I spoke at town meeting, and I quoted Governor Healy, who I heard on WBUR last month, and she was very clear. I'm, I'm reading her words. "I take enforcement of that law very seriously, hoping all will come in compliance. For those who don't, you will see withholding of state money. In fact, what we did under our administration is we took the existing list of programs that communities were not going to get money for if they didn't comply, we added to that list, we more than doubled that list." So she was very, very clear. I don't understand why, you know, there's confusion around that. 11 out of the 12 MBTA communities, such as Brooklyn, Newton, are in compliance, we're the, the lone withholder of this. We heard from Josh, I don't know his last name, but very clearly what the implications are. She, the Governor also mentioned roads, she mentioned bridges. And most important to me is the 40-year career educator, funding for schools. I happened to talk to a school committee member today and said this is impacting their ability to plan because they don't know, are they going to be getting the grants, are they going to be getting the money that they need to plan? I'm also here as a senior citizen who will be looking to downsize at some point soon and having the, the multi-unit. and having the multi-units. A lot of the people I speak to about the MBTA Act, I've spoken to people who said I'm voting no. And then when I've talked about the repercussions, about the thing that's so important to me is the loss of local control. We know that if we vote no, we don't get a say. The governor comes in, the state comes in, and they rezon for us. We may have some ideas on how to mitigate some of the things that folks are worried about. We lose all that. It's, I mean, that is, along with the funding, that loss of local control really is problematic for me. I live on Central Avenue, across from the 36 Central condos. People were fighting that tooth and nail, and now that is a very integral part of the community. It fits beautifully, it supports two businesses. So I do not want the state coming in rezoning for us and losing two years of being able to amend. Again, as I spoke to people, I think people, you know, I'm a child of the 60s. We protested lots of things, but to this no protest might feel good, saying, no, I don't want this. It doesn't make it go away. It makes local control go away, it makes funding go away. And I strongly, for the sake of our community, I can't see how we can live without this money and live without the local control. So strongly, strongly urging you to support this.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else, Josh?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, great. We have someone else in the audience. Oh, sorry. Welcome, yeah. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Raymond. I live at 18 Hanton Avenue. I've lived in Milton since about 2005. First, I wanted to, you know, really just offer my admiration and appreciation for all of you on the planning board. These are just following this MBTA Communities Law stuff over the past year or so. It's really complex. These are not easy things. I have a PhD in public policy, so I say that as somebody who teaches policy analysis and understands data and all of that kind of stuff. So I really admire and appreciate all of the time that you put in. These are complicated decisions, and I really, I understand that. I'm here tonight to express my support for a yes vote on the February 13th referendum and to ask the planning board to support the proposal and keep Milton in compliance. Others have made arguments against the MBTA Communities Act and also against previous attempts to expand multifamily and rental housing. One argument that's often offered and has been offered in the past around expanding multifamily housing through other means has been that we need to keep Milton the same. We need to preserve the character of Milton. We need to keep it the same as it has been. And while that desire to stay the same is, you know, is important, there's nostalgia in wanting to stay the same, but it also overlooks that we change all the time. We want new technologies, we want better Wi-Fi, we want roads, we want all the things, right? Those things will change. I'm going to give you one example. There have been significant changes to the housing supply in Milton. I didn't go back over the past 18 years since I've been here, but just over the past five years. So to give you an example, data from the American Community Survey reveals that since 2017, which is only five and a half, six years ago, almost seven, time passes, Milton has seen nearly a 20% increase in housing units with three or more bedrooms. 20% in six, seven years? That is huge. I'm sure you have seen it all around you, on my street, on the Hanton Ave. Houses have gone from being small, many houses have gone from being smaller starter homes with, you know, maybe 1,400 square feet into five-bedroom homes, five-bedroom, five-bath homes. So change is happening all the time to our housing stock. And we're not being honest if we say, keep Milton the way it is. Milton is changing all the time. So I want to raise that to the planning board. I'm sure you're aware of it, but hearing that number, I was even surprised by the number of 20%. And I went looking for it so I could demonstrate what I've been seeing anecdotally. That's a huge number. What it means, there's nothing wrong with having a large house, but what it means for us as a town is that, one, larger homes tend to require more resources to build and to sustain. So we're building housing that is requiring more. Often, in that building or redeveloping, we're cutting down trees. I'm a native plant person myself, so cutting down trees, you know, disrupting the natural environment, killing organisms in the soil while we dig up to put in additional foundation, et cetera, et cetera. Also, what we're doing is the redevelopment and development of larger homes is erasing smaller homes. We've cut out the bottom. We've gotten rid of the starter homes, the smaller homes, which leaves fewer options for younger families, like many people who moved into Milton, who moved into starter homes and then stayed here for longer, may have moved, may have built on or expanded. Those options are going away. They're disappearing. And it also means that there are fewer smaller homes for older residents who might want to downsize. So many of the houses in my neighborhood that were one-level ranches were ideal for people who wanted to downsize, not have stairs, live in a smaller place, stay in their community in Milton. They're disappearing all around us. We have to do something to address that, to make sure that we have the variety of housing that we need in Milton for all of our residents. What's also happening is because Milton has refused, Milton, like many communities, is refusing to, is refusing to build multifamily housing and rental housing and really address issues of affordability, we have little control over 40B developments. And so that lack of control is leaving us to have very large 40B developments. They are coming. We know, you know better than anybody else, you know more than anybody watching this meeting or most of the people in Milton, what is coming in Milton. And we have really little control to say what it should look like, how big it should be, where it should go, right? So we've been giving up our control by refusing to address this problem. It's not just, this is not an unjust law. It's not unusual for the Commonwealth to mandate something from towns and cities. I've read comments, I've heard comments, like, who does the governor think she is? She's the governor. Governors issue mandates. The Commonwealth has issued mandates on everything from something like this, like housing affordability, housing stock, building rental housing, to how our public safety officers should be trained. It's part of what the Commonwealth does, is issue mandates to towns and cities. There's nothing unusual about it. It's not partisan politics. It's part of how government works. So I'll wrap up.
If you could just, yeah, thank you.
Instead of digging in our heels and refusing to comply, this gives us the opportunity to retain local control, and we should seize that opportunity and work together to create a vision and a plan. This is just one reason why I think we should support the MBTA Communities Act. I hope that the planning board will take this opportunity to be proactive, to be strategic, to really embrace that local control that we can have with the MBTA Communities Act and to keep the future of Milton in the hands of Milton. We need you to do this and to lead us on this.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I think that concludes our Citizen Speak. We are, no one else from the public here wanting to speak. Okay, thank you all. Then we can now look to, we should have Ned Corcoran joining us on Zoom this evening. And we can open, this evening, we are going to open the 10711 Highland Street Special Permit for Memory Care Facility. And for those who are joining us, we will not be really discussing this tonight. It will be deferred to a future date. Ned, I see you, so welcome. I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you, Meredith. Happy New Year all, although it's now approximately the end of January. That's right, we are, we know that the hearing had to be re-advertised because of the failure of hosting a meeting last December. And so the control date that was picked was tonight. We're working on some things that are, lots of two comments that we've heard from board members in the neighborhood. We're not ready to present those. We should be ready to go in mid-February. And so we're requesting that we continue until, we were going to request February 15th, if that could be available. I know that you discussed the notion of February 22nd meeting. We were hoping that we could go February 15th and February 29th, but we're obviously sensitive to your requirements as a board. I did notify by email representatives of the neighborhood to alert them that we would be requesting this continuance, that we would not be going forward tonight. I did get an acknowledgement from the council for the neighborhood receiving that notification. So with that, we request continuance to begin another charter where we could be able, where we could be able, and so we request the next opportunity for meeting.
That's great. I'm not sure how the board feels. And certainly, we want to give you ample time to really, you know, quality time for the applicant on this night. So we have been meeting almost every week for a while now, and I didn't want to make assumptions if the board would like to meet sooner, but I think right now we have a pretty open schedule for the 22nd, which seems like the best time, Ned, that we could really give you a good allotment.
I understand. Look at that, as an observer, watching all the things that you're reviewing, I can understand meeting fatigue, it's expected of that, and the pressure that comes with all this. I think that we'll make February 22 work.
That's great.
We'll look forward to robust discussion that night, and we'll continue soon after that.
That's great. So with that, could I have a motion? Unless there's, is there anything else, Ned, before we make a motion to?
Are we going to meet with the chief sometime, Chief Madden?
Yes, so he will come that night. Obviously, he's not here because tonight we're not discussing it. But he was available originally to come tonight, but with.
Gotcha.
So a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for 111 and 0 Highland Street Special Permit for Memory Care Facility to February 22nd at 7:05.
Second.
Second, all right, all in favor? Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We will see you then. So now we can reopen our 10 Basset Street modification of site plan approval. This is actually the opening of this public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. How are you? Let's do it. Very good. Are you doing it? Am I right here?
Yes, that is it.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Certified letter saying this happening, I thought we're having a discussion.
Oh, yes, they needed to.
Take any public comment?
Continue. Yes, so yes, and there'll be plenty of time to comment on that evening. Thank you.
Chair Hall.
Yes, welcome.
Members of the board, my name is Michael Modestino. I'm an attorney. I've appeared here before, not too recent. I live in Canton, and I practice in Braintree. I'm here with Anthony Maggiore. He's the contractor for the owner of the property. Michael McNosfer is the manager of the property. Couldn't be here tonight, just had a death in their family, as you may be aware. And we're here tonight for a, requesting a modification of a site plan approval that was done in January of 2023. And Tim worked with us on this, and he suggested that we file for modification in order to build a stairway that would be coming from the second floor and would provide access to the public to get up and down the stairway. Anthony is going to explain what he can about the stairway. I know that there were some questions raised. I know a member, Tugias, had asked some questions about it, about parking and things like that. It's our opinion, as I indicated in the cover letter that came with it, that this stairway would be five feet wide, and it would be 16.5 feet in height with 19 rises and a seven-inch maximum with 11-inch treads with a 42-inch high guard rail and a 36-low guard rail for younger people, obviously. And Anthony will explain the construction of it. I mean, the purpose behind it is not any requirement by code or anything. The purpose is solely to provide access to the public so that when they're up on the second floor, if they're going to the outdoor seating area, it's being enclosed now, that they'd have easy access to the parking lot, and they wouldn't have to go through the stores or anything like that. And it's a safety reason, too. I mean, if there's some kind of, God forbid, a fire or something like that, it would be easy access to get off of the roof and down to the parking lot. And that's really the sole reason for it. We think it makes sense. I think Anthony can explain what the stairway would look like and how safe it would be.
Josh, is there any way you could pull up that plan just for the public to be able to see the proposed change? Can you, do you have the architectural elevations from a side view?
This is the plan that I have. I don't have elevations for you.
I think it's at the top of the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen it. I just, I didn't know if the public, yeah. Yes, that's sort of a side.
There you go, let me take it.
Great, okay. Good, so you mentioned a top rail and a middle rail? This looks like it has multiple rails, is that not?
My name is Anthony Maggiore.
Yeah, go ahead.
Contractor, and actually originally built the marketplace with the owners years ago, and have done modifications on it over the years, many. So we had gotten approved for this second level to close in the outside seating, and it's been going well, and I think we've got a lot of positive feedback. So while working on it, I suggested to the owners, to the companies of Egress, or patrons coming in and out of the place, you have room, and it would be a nice conforming design for an exterior set of stairs. Wouldn't impact the walkways, it wouldn't impact the space upstairs, it wouldn't add or take away any modifications that we've already been approved for. It wasn't mandated by the building department. I did present it to the building department, and they were all for it. They said, it's a great idea, and we'd love to see it, and that's what brought us here. So that being said, when you, the design of the stairway, especially if it's in a commercial setting, any type of a platform has to have a 42-inch high rail, guard rail. Now, that platform comes off the second level. You step right out off the second level onto that platform, which is constructed out of steel, self-supporting, over the roof, a small pitch of the roof. And then you have a steel set of stairs that's coming down. Now, the reason for the two elevations of the railings on the stairs is the higher elevation follows the rake of the stair, which ties into the 42-inch platform. And then the 36-inch high rail is a more comfortable rail, low level for children, that type of thing. And it's a continuous rail with no interruption, so you have a safe handrail on either side. It's going to be out of the steel construction. They have, we have a newer product now that is a steel grid, actually. The tread is going to be, that is so well-designed that a woman with heels can walk up, it's not going to get stuck in between the slots. And they're not a solid tread because they keep more water to leak through. So they don't potentially freeze in that type of thing on the stairs. So it's all in all, we've got a lot of positive feedback on it, and again, that's what brought us here.
Great. Questions from the board? I'll let everybody sort of ask.
Yeah, I have, one of the things that I was concerned about and the reason I asked for the plan with the accurate handrail extensions was just the proximity of the handrail to the last parking space, the handicap parking space, and the, you know, the drain, the catch base that's there for the stormwater. And it does, it seems tight to me, 3.9 feet. And that extension is, I believe that you can look at an alternative that doesn't require you to go the full one foot plus a tread length beyond the stair when it presents a safety hazard. So I guess I'm just, that's just more as a safety concern. From an architectural point of view, the design and the character of the marketplace is different than this. And I guess I'm wondering, you know, having looked at the architectural plans that were submitted to us for a previous meeting and the plans that were submitted when the enclosed space was improved. You mentioned that the platform is going to be self-supporting, but the architectural plan shows some column, a column coming down, looks like through the roof. Is that, is that actually going to be what happens?
Correct. Which is part of the platform that supports the platform on its own. We're not depending on that roof for support.
So have you thought about integrating that platform, that landing at the top where the door is, more into the architecture rather than having it look like an emergency stair added on top, which is kind of the appearance that it has now? It's, you know, the character of the enclosure, you know, has, I guess, to use one of Meredith's terms, kind of a New England feel or look to it. And the stair is more of a modern aesthetic. And it's just, I guess, it would be nice if it could integrate a little bit better, design-wise. So that's two things. Sort of the safety at the bottom with that basically 23 inch extension. There are provisions in the code. I am an architect, so I'm coming at that comment from my professional background. And then the idea of having the character of it fit more of the architecture. And then the last thing I'll say is, I think if the intent, because I raised this before too, a second stair means occupancy can go above 50 people. That's the trigger for two means of egress from a space. And so it says it's posted for 49 occupants. And the reason this is important is just the traffic, or the parking space count and the potential of what the capacity for the parking lot is for a number of users. So I guess, it says in your letter that there's not an intent to increase it. So I guess I would just say that that will be something that could be a condition in any approval so that if there was going to go above 49, that it would need to come back to us.
That would make sense.
Yeah, those are my comments.
Others?
I had similar thoughts to Cheryl. You said it more eloquently than I could. I think it's a very attractive building. And I'm afraid that the staircase might detract from the attractiveness of the building. You know, that's, that's right at the front door where most people go. And I know probably the front door is theoretically at the CVS entrance, but most people go into the Fruit Center entrance. So I totally understand the need for it and I'm not against having a staircase there. But I think maybe, you know, making it look more cohesive with the existing building. You know, my background is in trees and shrubs. So maybe even having a planting bed in front of it might help soften the look a little bit. I know that they do a really good job with all their displays out front, but it could be kind of stark in the winter when there's not a lot of greenery out there.
I certainly think the planting bed would make sense.
That, just to piggyback off of that, I think one of the nice things about the Fruit Center is the display coming in. So how this stair impacts those displays, I think would be interesting to see as well. And whether that's some kind of permanent landscape bed so that it directs the flow of traffic, people traffic rather, not car traffic, you know, at those, those multiple entrance points. Because there's really three then in a very small area.
Let me just ask the question. When you say planting bed, something permanent on the side or around the stair? Because as you see, with the seasons change and how they change their decor on the outside to follow the seasons, that's what would be happening around the stairway, same thing. Whether it's their pumpkins, their Christmas decorations, they'd be wrapping that around that, still using that side of the stairway, on the outside of the stairway to do that. To do something permanent, I think might be a little...
So that gets me back to the 3.9 feet and a parking space there. So if people don't have room to pass, they'll be stepping into parking, live cars, parking spaces to get around.
You wouldn't do anything in that whole front corner? You wouldn't do anything because of the line of travel? They don't do it now, they haven't done it. Ever. In that line of travel. To maintain the proper width that you need for egress.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be a permanent planting bed. But, you know, I appreciate that seasons change and there are different seasonal items. Maybe even just having one, maybe permanent tree. You know, it doesn't, it could be a more iconic, it could be a more festive.
Here's the other safety component of that on that side. I don't want, the way it's designed, they have a fire connection on that side of the building. And the way this is designed architecturally doesn't impact that. If I started bringing stuff like under the platform or that way, it would impact that fire connection and be kind. I wanted to do that. So I wanted to keep that open. But on the front side of the stairs, on the forward side, yeah, they could display there. But not on the, on the very front, on the side of the stairs. The front side of the stairs, not the front of the stairs, because that's your egress.
Yeah, it's just, I think needs to be softened a little bit.
It's almost too, I mean, really, it's one parking space less would be, give it a lot more breathing room, but you're not necessarily in to ask for that. But I do worry about the congestion.
Especially a handicap spot. I wouldn't want to give up a handicap spot.
What does that RP mean in that?
It's next, that's not a handicap one. It's next to the handicap one according to the plan.
Is that what RP means, regular parking?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that is a designated spot for deliveries or, you know, it's not a handicap spot at first. They usually keep that, I think they have a special parking sign on that or if they're bringing something in, if they're unloading out of a, one of their vans or that, they try to keep that spot open. But it's not designated as a handicap spot.
I thought all their deliveries were in the back. There's a sign that's...
This one on the end is, I know.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. This one on the end is what they try to keep open. You sure that one they try to keep open as well?
This one, yeah.
That's the one they open? I've seen him chase people out of this spot, but never there, but that's all right.
No, 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 no. I mean, if somebody pulls in, they don't...
Actually, the more I look at it, that space gone would make so much sense.
It's just, they use that for that. But when you say deliveries and around that, they have a van, standard-sized vehicle, what have you, that if they're just unloading something or whatever, they pull in there. We've used it when we were doing the work there. It's a convenient spot to use, but it's not a handicap spot or a restricted spot in that respect. But the other side is marked for deliveries, the very far side of that parking lot, yes. They have it labeled as handicap. When he did that, if I'm not mistaken, when you guys did that whole cleaning of the parking lot, what have you, that it been approved for that.
So maybe you can take back the comments. I'm sure we have others, but the other one I would add is, is to think about that, since I raised this concern about the 3.9, that parking space, how critical is that space if it meant that people coming up and down that stair would have an easier, freer flow without having a pinch point sort of where the parking space and the corner of the building come together? So if you could talk to Mr. Munoz about that?
Yeah, I mean, we're all interested in the safety of people coming in and out.
Right.
Well, and I just want to say, because I am there every day and I, I'm a big supporter of this business and I, we are so grateful to have the Fruit Center in town. I think we were so pleased to approve the enclosure of the seating area. And I have to be really honest. You have such an attractive building and you're doing such a beautiful job in the way, the windows and the pediment, you've really created a beautiful entryway to come in, which really makes a beautiful statement. You're, you're really detracting from that by putting this in. I have to say, it's, it feels very industrial. It feels like an emergency exit. It feels honestly industrial and unattractive to such a beautiful building. And I know, because again, I'm there frequently, that patio area between the CVS and the, and the main entryway, those are the two main entries. I just don't see, I don't think I would ever use that, you know, exit, even if I was going in, going upstairs to the plate. You know, I don't know that that's going to be something that is readily, readily, you know, used by everyone, especially if the weather's, you know, if it's raining or snowing. I think you're maybe doing something that visually would do more, it would detract more from the building than enhancing it. And I, if it didn't have two egresses, you know, the nutshell entrance, the CVS, you can, there's multiple, there's three different ways you can really enter or going into through the CVS and up to the nutshell to go upstairs. If it was an absolute safety issue, but I think I would just ask that maybe you reconsider doing this and, because I think it will take away and that traffic flow, because it does get quite busy at that CVS entryway. You really need that area. I mean, I think there's a lot of people coming and going. They're putting their carts up sometimes, you know, they'll pull on their own, they'll bring the carts back up. Sometimes there's carts up, you know, in that area. I, it can be a very busy, and which is great because it's a vital business and the businesses that are upstairs are terrific. But I, you know, I really would do anything just for this business, but I just would question whether this is really aesthetically, I would almost rather see if you didn't do the staircase, what would be really nice, because you're also, the staircase would cover those windows on the first floor when you come in. The staircase would come right in and cover the glass portion. What would be really nice is to actually have an outdoor bench. Frequently, you'll see, especially some of the older members of the community or people who take Ubers to get their groceries, they'll be sitting there and waiting for a ride, somebody to pick them up on the inside. It might be really nice to have a bench that you have on the outside where people could sit, maybe wait for the ride and be outside on a nice day. But I, I just question that this is not something that would actually detract more than it would benefit as a, as a store owner. But again, that's just my, you know...
Certainly, but I think the idea was to give the customers a choice, you know, to give them another option. And then also the safety concerns that might be out there too. So it could be another way to get down from there. You know, however you feel had to.
So speaking of the safety concerns, this isn't something that the building department asked you to put in to be compliant with the building code, right?
No.
Okay. Just to get to the, whether it's required or not question.
No, that's, that's not mandated at all. It was a thought process between all of them and it just came up once they saw the space up there. And they had to choose, it would be nice to have an egress from the outside so that people didn't have to come all through the building to come up there. That was the main gist of how this opening started. So we had, I thought you, who had done the design work, the architectural work to the second level, come in and do this for us and to get a stairway and see what we can offer the crew, what we... But at this point, I mean, if it's an architectural thing, I'm sure I could come up with another design. But if it's something that you're definitely opposed of, I mean, there's a few modifications, like you say, with this rail and egress and everything. I'll go physically lay all this out and, because I think he's got 3.9 here, but he's also got about another foot to the curb. Where he kept that 3.9 mark, if you look at that, so it's clearly almost like 4.9. So you've got a little bit more space, but I don't believe you need this extension that he's put on here, this handrail extension on this, because it's not something that's a handicap egress. Doesn't need, if it was a wheelchair ramp, you would need that extension.
Well, it is part of the code, but there is a provision in the code that if it's going to cause a safety hazard for that extension, that there's, you can have another way of wrapping it around. And so I would just ask for them to, to take a look at that. But that's different than Meredith's point.
No, I understand.
And maybe we can hear what Sean's thoughts are too.
Definitely, and Jim, yeah. Sean, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I, I actually like the idea of the stair. And I favor egress and additional egress over aesthetic concerns. This is me. So I just think the priority in, you know, as I look at it, would be to provide egress and do the very best you could to address the concerns that Meredith and Cheryl have raised. So I won't go on, there's been a lot of conversation so far. I also would, you know, from my perspective, I happen to be a builder and I just, I don't want to get into commenting on what should be the building inspector's responsibility with respect to railing extensions and things of that nature. So I would encourage you that, although you do have comments here with the planning board, you know, there are certain items with whatever you might be doing that are your responsibility to sort out with the building inspector, not planning board. So in short, I, I think it's a good initiative to, to create additional egress. And I'd suggest you consider what you've heard from Meredith and Cheryl and come up with the best solution you can, but I think it's, I think it's a good change.
Jim, did you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're doing and I agree with it conceptually. I mean, because when you walk into the Fruit Center and there's the staircase inside, you go by the elevator, there's always a ton of pedestrian traffic there. So if you can alleviate some of that, I think it's great. And I guess after listening to my constituents on the board, I do appreciate that it does look a little industrial. And I don't know, I mean, I've built decks where I've put glass panels in and just had the railing. Is that even possible or in the commercial world, does that not happen? Or is that expensive or?
Project with that right now is, in fact, with a glass rail and actually, yeah.
Wouldn't that be neat? You could see right through it, all these, all these bars go away, except the handrails.
Yeah.
Anyway, that'd be my only suggestion, but you know, I'm all for it. I appreciate what you're doing.
Just as, and again, I appreciate it's their business and I don't like to micromanage businesses and they know their business the best. I own my own business. But I am sensitive to aesthetics. Would it, would they ever consider moving the staircase all the way down to, as you're looking at the building, all the way over on the right side? So you're still providing a second egress, but it goes up more by the nutshell? I haven't really been over there to look at that, just so it's not the focal point.
Your sensitivity is on that side of the building.
Yeah.
But to put something outside down there?
I know there's a wall, I think, with maybe some arborvitaries.
It's really, yeah.
There's not a...
Not a spine out there. I looked at a few different areas and, but the point was to service this second level more than it has another egress, not to pull the stairway away from that and try to service that area. So I think we can come up with some other, you know, designs and this was just a preliminary design. I actually, and I'll be quite frank, didn't give, I thought she was an architect who came out to any direction. She just came out and threw this up because we wanted to see if it would even be, you know, be something that could be considered, the stairway. I talked to the owners and we presented it, the idea as I was building it. I said, "You have this avenue here." But I'll tell you quite frankly, this is the first design that they presented to us. So we just wanted to see if it was even something that would be considered. And now hearing everybody's opinion, it sounds, because I appreciate that about it, it is unique building, there's no question. I mean, it's in in even all the additions I put on it over the years, we had to try to make it conforming so it keeps that character and doesn't look too commercial looking in the area it is. Because that could easily happen.
Yeah, it has a big, like a large farm stand, you feel like you're going to a, yeah. Farmer's market, yeah, farmer's market, sort of that country, New England feel. And I I, yeah, I think, yeah. Welcome you to come back with with something else, an alternative that has more of a New England feel that you would see in Vermont or, you know, or that country.
Yeah.
I'm sure they could come up with something.
Yeah, that's great.
So should we continue the hearing then?
So yes. Yeah, so I don't know how much time you feel like you would need to go back to the architect and come up with that little.
Give me a day now.
Because I know you want that project to to move along and not be delayed, yeah.
Second maybe, or the eighth, the eighth is not much time.
Is the the eighth, February 8th would probably be too soon for you. Yeah, so why don't we plan to continue to the 22nd of February? Would that be enough time or the? And say seven, 10 on that since we, could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for 10 Bassett Street?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for 10 Bassett Street, modification of site plan approval till February 22nd. Say seven, 10?
Yes.
Second?
All roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you very much. You're doing a great job. A loved business, okay. Okay, so now we can move on to new business. We have a Woodlot Drive bond release. Josh, if you want to introduce this and tee it up?
Absolutely, so this is pretty straightforward. There was a bond held for road repairs along Woodlot Drive as part of the special permit process. A bulk of it was released a few years ago as construction continued, but a small portion of it was retained to secure repairs at the bottom of Woodlot Road where it intersects with Unquity. Now, the DBW has reviewed those repairs and has determined that they have been completed to DPW and engineering satisfaction. And so we can release the remainder of that bond to Woodlot Drive.
Okay, any questions from the board on this?
Meredith, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Just in in reading the information that was in our folder on a particular topic for the meeting, I was a little confused by how much is is remaining to be released. Josh, there was an email request from the John one from Goldie in January, which identified, excuse me, one bill value. And then separately, there's another document that identifies how much logic, how much is that's that's remaining to be released?
It is, it is prior, I think you're seeing the original bond value versus the remaining bond value, so it should be that.
It was. Yeah, the the January request was maybe $13,000.
Yes, it's 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 small on the scale of this.
Okay, okay, and last question, was the bond for both Uncity Road and also Woodlot Drive? Or was it only required for impact on Uncity Road, what to protect that?
So it it was the opposite, so it was just for Woodlot Drive. And this section was just at the intersection with Uncity Road as they created Woodlot Drive. So I I think there were some issues with bonding that they needed to fix, which they have done so.
And I saw Mr. Burke's email, he satisfied that request, okay, I'm fine with it, I have no further questions, thank you.
Great, anyone else, any other questions for the board?
No.
I'll make a motion if you're, if you will take it.
Yep.
To approve the bond release, the remaining funds for the bond release at Woodlot Drive.
I second.
Okay, roll call, all in favor, Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great, thank you very much. Moving right along. And so now we have on our next item for on our agenda, the MBTA communities zoning discussion. Do we want to do the, in order, it doesn't really matter if we want to do the review of the RFP first? Or do we want to do, go to the discussion of the MBTA communities?
I think the, I'm fine with doing the affordable housing piece first, I think.
Site plan approval.
Yeah, we've talked about the scope, I think at a couple of meetings and Tim circulated a revised scope.
Yeah.
So I'm fine, I don't think that should take us a lot of time, right?
Yeah, I don't.
I have a question on it, Meredith.
Yeah.
Today, and and I I think we we trust Tim with how he's written this, he's done a good job writing it. The the only, the only part that isn't, isn't in there is a definition of time, right? So we're asking the consultant and there's a list of, there's a, there's a list of, I guess there's a list of criteria, right, we're asking them to utilize as they prepare a response for us, but there's no timeline. Or.
How much time they have to do it?
Is that what you mean? That we would like the work completed by, a completion, completed by date.
Either we, we haven't identified a completed date or nor have we asked them to tell us what a completion date, you know, a proposed timeframe. That's my only question.
Yeah, I think, didn't Tim say two to three months, so we could have put in a from time of notice to proceed a delivery within three months or something like that.
April 30th.
I think this is an opportunity for us to define when we want the material and then let the responding, you know, entities say whether they can or they can't. So we, I would, I would refer to, and I'm not saying we do this tonight, but I would prefer to have the time, date and time identified.
Now, I thought we were talking about releasing to MAPC to do it for the 15,000. Is, are you saying this differently, Sean?
No, I'm not, no. But but what I am saying is there's no time date for whenever we're going to get a response. We have neither given them the date when we want to buy it or when we ask them to tell us how long it's going to take.
I would agree that we would ask for that. And defer to Tim to maybe, you know, we could ask, because we don't, this doesn't. Doesn't have to be final tonight.
We just ask him to get in on that, he'll, we will put that.
Either in April 15th, April 30th.
Whatever he thinks is appropriate.
Whatever, yeah, on a date that appropriate.
Just.
I'll put in if the scope of work, April 30th, and then see if Tim thinks it should be.
Great, thanks, Josh.
Right, other comments on the scope of work?
I think this is being funded through department funds or grants, so I don't think it necessarily is like a, an approval, but a support of this scope, right? In terms of what we're asked to vote on.
Right.
Does that sound right, Josh?
That doesn't sound right to me.
Okay. Is this coming from planning board funds then?
That we have 15,000 left in the one stop funding that we have and the community plan grants, so.
All right, so is that, I'm sorry, Josh, is that anticipation that this would come from planning board funds or grant funds?
Yeah, well, it's the planning board requesting it, so that would be the difference.
Okay, all right, so then I would make a motion.
I just have a couple of things, sorry, that's, so I would just add a a couple of small things, just in sending this out, the scope of work. And these are maybe small things, but that the consultant will provide services to assist the town instead of the town of, I would say, the town of Milton. It doesn't refer to the town until you get much further down, so just in reading this as an introduction, the town of Milton. In analyzing the economic feasibility of increased affordability requirements in MBTA community zoning per EOHLC's instruction, yeah.
Can I just send a report?
Sure.
Josh, can you pull this up on the screen so we can see what Meredith is referring to? I have it on my computer, but I think it could be helpful for the public as well.
Yeah. As you make these recommendations.
Great, and then where it goes down, just in that same initial paragraph, instructions for economic feasibility analysis and any other relevant guidelines. So in that, I think that's just sort of open ended and vague to say, and any other guidelines. Because as we know, if if the guidelines change, we just wouldn't want, we would want to protect our town and our economic feasibility study for what was approved. In at, as the guidelines currently are, but we just, we don't know down the road if they would change. So I would, I would rather say pursuant, I would say, instructions for economic feasibility analysis pursuant to chapter 275 of the general bylaws, section 275 dash 323, MBTA communities multifamily overlay zoning. So, so I'm just taking out rather, because I just think that's very sort of open ended and vague.
But are you keeping EOHLC's instructions?
Yes, EOHLC's instructions for economic feasibility analysis. And we could just either put period, task will include, but I think it makes sense to put pursuant to what the, instead of article, you know, we could say article one, but it's not.
I see, so you're wanting to tie it directly to the.
Actual article.
Okay.
That's good thinking.
Meredith, for clarification.
Because if the guidelines change, sort of like the stretch code I'm learning about, you were, it, we're automatically adopting the newer.
Right, and it might put our feasibility study out of, it it might trigger something, you know, that we we can anticipate at this time. So I think it would, this, it protects us by tying it into what our town has voted for and and following the EOHLC's instructions for economic feasibility analysis.
Can I just ask Josh one thing about that?
Sure.
Josh, are you aware of any particular reason that Tim included those words, relevant guidelines and the other relevant guidelines?
Yeah, so I I think this is maybe a point of confusion. The sentiment is first and foremost, a a general sort of catchall. But also it is not specifically referencing the MBTA communities guidelines. It's it's more to give us the flexibility for them to use fair housing or other statewide provisions on inclusionary zoning. The instructions for economic feasibility analysis are part of sort of EOHLC's guidelines as part of MBTA communities compliance. The guidelines referenced in that, any other relevant guidelines is not the sort of guidance that has been updated by EOHLC for MBTA communities. So I'm happy to have it be what Chair Hall has said, but.
I think that's cleaner and it just ties to our.
Guidelines to guidelines.
Okay.
I I guess then if there were other guidelines, they could bring those to us just to ask if they, if those could be considered. I just don't want to tie their hands too much and not get a full report, is all my concern is.
Yeah, I think if they're, if they're doing all of these things and they're per the instructions for economic feasibility analysis. I think that I feel safe with that and tying it to what we we vote on.
Well, it certainly ties it to this, which is what we've talked about, so that's fine.
Thank you with that. I like it tied to what we passed.
So I think those are the, just the two things I have is that we, the the town of Milton, I think it's great. This is much more of the specific, more being more specific as we had asked, you know, that we're able to look at things from a different, all different aspects, including a pay in to the Affordable Housing Trust. Just all the criteria sort of that we were, that I know personally I was looking for and that I think would give a good product, so.
So you ready for a motion now?
Yes.
Okay, then I would move that we authorize the planning department to proceed with engaging MAPC on the scope of work as discussed and modified tonight with an amount to be allocated from the planning board's budget of is it 15,000, Josh, that we need? Was it 15?
Not to exceed 15,000.
Not to exceed 15,000.
Is there a second? All right, roll call, Maggie?
Yes.
Jim? Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Can you circulate the revised version, please, Josh?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. And then site plan approval procedures, Josh. Can you just sort of just update us on what you learned from your discussion with town council and and Karis North and approach how we, how we can best strategically approach the site plan?
Yeah, absolutely, so Tim and I met with Gidamello and Karis North this morning to talk through the certain processes that they've seen and they recommend for updating site plan review procedures. What's particularly helpful, as has been said in previous meetings, is that Karis and Peter are both highly involved with the Massachusetts Municipal Law Association. And Karis was able to give us a quick update on the legislation that is going through the state level to codify site plan review into state law, which would be huge, because as you know, site plan review is kind of a loose and undefined process that changes from municipality to municipality without any sort of state guidance. So Karis is very excited about that update and she's also working with NADIC about a sort of draft update to their site plan review that she thinks is particularly good. Sort of exemplar for site plan review, given the sort of general priorities that this board has expressed. But in the absence of very specific guidelines. To that end, her recommendation was that this board, you you've had a number of site plan review policies that we've sent around over the last couple of weeks. That you all find and document which sections of those site plan reviews speak most strongly to you as something that would be relevant to include in the update of Milton's site plan review procedures. Tim and I can then incorporate those into a red line of our site plan review. And then we will send it off to Karis and Peter to review the legality of those, sort of in the absence of the state's guidance on site plan review.
And did you ask her to review what's in article one?
Yes. So far, she she didn't see any issues with it, she thought it was a good starting point, as it were, for updating our general site plan review. She did note, because she also reviewed, I think, one of some of your previous variants on article one and and relevant to your earlier conversation, you know, design guidelines and and sort of those aesthetic considerations have been the strongest thing that has been legislated and sort of defined in case law as something that cannot really be meaningfully sort of used as a denial purpose through site plan review. So we really want to be careful and deliberate and explicit when it comes to certain design restrictions, aesthetic ones typically don't apply.
So, I mean, my understanding what about site plan approval is that you're looking to guide the the development, the design, the site design, the building design, and that you are allowed to do that. And you have to be specific enough that it's not subjective, what you're reviewing. Is that what she spoke about?
Exactly, yeah. This sort of, the legal sort of parlance, like capricious aesthetic considerations have typically been what has. have typically been what has sort of been appealed when site plan reviews, sort of site plans are denied. So if you are to include more specific design guidelines, they have to be really very specific and be the ones you will hold yourselves to rather than, you know, a preference for neographic or modernist architecture type designs.
So does any of the work that we did on the Milton Village, can that be applied or is that, is that more considered guidelines?
That's, yeah, that's, since that's a special permit process.
Precisely.
The guidelines are different there. The standards that are in the zoning are absolutely enforceable because they're in the zoning.
So can we use those standards? So instead of.
Some of them were, I looked at those again, and some of those are written very specifically for the conditions in Milton Village.
Trying not to have to reinvent the whole.
Yeah. Well, I, of course, I'm a little biased since I did some work and research on the what's in article one. And I did do the work too on that for Milton Village. Of course, I didn't get a chance to read all of the things that were circulated since last week. So I think it's worth, like Josh suggested, that we should do that. I know it was just today that I asked to circulate that webinar. And I think it would be very helpful for board members to also watch that because it's very specific to 3A or the MBTA communities. And it, it was an attorney from KP Law and Judy Barrett, the attorney from KP Law, whose name I'm forgetting, and Judy Barrett did that particular webinar. And I watched that before I did the edits for article one, and I found it to be really helpful. So I think it is good if everybody, if, if Charis thinks that those are a good starting point, then I think we should take a look at all of what we have and see what we think.
In which, you mentioned NADIC. Does she have a draft of the NADIC?
She said she would circulate it to us after today's meeting. Now we're expecting it tomorrow.
That's, that's very helpful. Okay. So I think, and the other ones that were sent out, did everybody receive those?
Can I just ask, actually, ask, is the site plan approval in for, I noticed that Lexington said it was adopted by their planning board in September, the changes. So some things like our rules and regs are adopted outside of zoning being adopted by town meeting. So is that the case with our site plan approval? Or is it, I think it's actually in our zoning though. Is that right, Josh?
That's, that is correct. The site plan approval is in, previously section 10. I haven't internalized what the new codified zoning section numbers are, but it is in zoning. And so we need to go through a town meeting process.
And do you, can you talk or ask Charis whether she thinks that could be done, something as a part of the rules and regs, so it doesn't have to go through as a zoning change? I mean, it could be like gets repealed or from the zoning and then we adopt something separately? That way it's not tied to a town meeting schedule?
I can totally ask.
And it could be amended as we need to, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I've seen it in, in other towns. Rules and regs though, that you mentioned, you know, adopted by the planning board.
I could be mistaken about Lexington, but if you wouldn't mind asking, or I just think it'd be, because design guidelines we know can be adopted by the planning board outside of the zoning and outside of the sort of town meeting schedule. So I'm, I just would like to know that for sure.
I will ask.
And then sort of what's the timeline? Usually how long does it take to come up with, you know, a final document? Are we looking into March or into April?
It depends who's going to work on it, right? So, and how, and how quickly the person working on it can do it, right? So I think that what Josh suggested is everyone review the materials, see what they think. Some of what I included in article one was based on my experience of what I saw shortcomings. And I think you all, some of those you all have seen too in your time on the board because our current site plan approval is so minimal, yes, so weak. So it seems to me rather than a red line, just start with this provision in this other town is a nice provision and just kind of put a list together. And, and then see if those things conceptually are acceptable to Charis before doing a.
Right.
And if cut and paste or a red line can take time, like where is it appropriate? You know, get the concept first.
So that's how I was just thinking, looking at our schedule. Should there be, you know, a meeting, like a couple of meetings where the significant portion of the meeting time is dedicated? I don't know what else is coming up.
On the eighth, we may have time to start on it. And if we, you know, just circulate sort of what we're, what we're focusing in on.
I just like deadlines, so I know what to.
Yeah, I mean.
So I would say if, if everyone has time in the next, is that two weeks? To look at what's been circulated.
And if Sean will be here, but yeah, but at least we could get a start on it and a jump on sort of what we would be wanting. I would love to, you know.
So by February, we should.
If we could shoot, if we could, if our goal is, you know, for something in May, but a backup in the fall, but I, but I think it's something we've been talking about and it seems like we should be able to.
And, and we should hopefully have an answer about whether it has to be in the zoning versus whether it can be in rules and regs. And, and that would be helpful. If there's state law, I'd, I'd like to understand what's in the state law. You know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel if, if things are advanced there.
Isn't it in article one though already?
Yeah, we have a lot in article one.
Yeah.
Right, we have site plan review in article one, so wouldn't it be tied to any article we bring for town meeting?
No, there's, so there would be our, what would be in our zoning. But then it is complemented what, what we have in, they should be tied together. Basically, what is in article one, we don't currently have in our, in our bylaws. So we need to, you know, in order to enforce what's in our article, we actually should have something that.
Oh, I think it's, I think it's enforceable.
We're writing this for our zoning bylaws? We're writing this for our article one?
Correct. Our zoning bylaws.
Okay. So we're just going to take whatever's in article one now for our, if we put an article forward at town meeting?
So the. We would build on, yeah.
Yeah, so my thought, yeah, so my thought would be if, if there were.
Article one's more, much more than what we have right now in our.
Oh, I get it. I'm tracking. Yeah, I understand.
So the idea I think that Meredith suggested before was because site plan approval right now is a standalone section of the zoning, that could be updated in and of itself. And any new zoning could refer to that for site plan approval. That's what some other communities have done for their MBTA communities is instead of putting it in their MBTA community's bylaw, they just refer back. So it depends, right now, we keep it in here and it's much, like Meredith said, it's much more in there than we have in our current. We'd like to get our current updated at some point. Does it make sense to remove it from there and refer back to an updated one that applies to everything? For consistency, probably, but we wouldn't do anything about it until we're ready for that.
Like six months, a year?
So for other projects, like our 440 Granite, when that came along.
Right.
We didn't, you know, we didn't really have much to, it was very vague what we were working with. And we did the best we could and was, you know, I think we were successful in the outcome. But, but it was, you tread a very fine line on what you're able to ask a developer to do.
Right.
But this is in there, so I think that's good. All right. So we'll start our next discussion, see how far, you know, we can give some, a fair amount of time, you know, on, on the eighth, I think, to that. Anything else on that site plan approval? Okay. And we have our economic feasibility, which will circulate that draft. Josh, and I did want to just confirm that the chapter 275 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaw, that's, you've got that, right? It's not mass general law?
Yes, I, I, the guidelines that you were referring to were, the guidelines are part of.
Section 275, right.
Section 275 of the Milton?
Yes.
Of zoning, okay.
That's article one, basically, but it's what article one is in the zoning code section numbering.
So I'm, I'm taking this straight out of the warrant, if you went on page nine, so if you want to.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I'm happy to include that. I, I don't think it makes a lot of sense because article one does not set economic feasibility analysis guidelines.
But Josh, what we were talking about last week was that the consultant needs to know what the, what's in the districts, what the dimensional standards are. So we wanted to tie it to what was approved in article one. So that's what they're working from.
I hear that, Cheryl.
Yeah.
So I just didn't want to call it article one because that seems, yeah.
Rather than something abstract, something different than what the zoning is, we did, we want it tied to the zoning.
Yeah, no, I mean, don't give them any reason to understand anything else. I, I, I'll make that change.
Okay, great. All right. So just the, so the last thing we have is the discussion of the upcoming February 13th referendum and just position, if the planning board wants to take a position. Cheryl had asked that we put this on the agenda. And I, I know we've talked a lot about this, but I just wanted to give the opportunity for the board, if they wanted to state an opinion on this, or not state an opinion, but that we had the opportunity for the members to discuss this. So if someone would like to start us off on.
Well, since I requested it being put on the agenda, would you like me to start off? Or Sean, are you beginning to speak?
No, Cheryl, I think you, you requested it. You should leave.
Okay, thanks. You know, I think when we first started this process, we all said that we needed the public, the residents, to be engaged in the process. And we lamented that it was hard to get people, you know, to pay attention at a time when it was all getting discussed, all the 30 iterations and all the standards and the analysis. And now people are tuned in. And I think they should hear from us because we're the ones who have put in a lot of work on this over, over the course of the last year in particular, and probably even a little bit more if we go back and look at our notes. So, and then there's just been some, you know, more and more information that's been forthcoming in the last couple of months, which I think sort of brings me to a point of risk. You know, we, and I know town council also made reference to this at the select board meeting the other night. So what's the risk associated with a yes vote? And what's the risk associated with a no vote? And so that's what people have to sort of weigh in making a decision when they go to the, to the, to vote on February 13th. And so we could talk about whether we like the law or we could talk about whether we think that there's a truly a housing crisis, which the law is intended to address. But the, the fact of the matter is it is a state law. We've heard from the Attorney General that she's serious about enforcing compliance. And we've heard from the governor that she's serious about consequences of non-compliance. And so I think, I'd like to say, what do we really risk with a yes vote? So I think, okay, most people might say the zoning can be improved. How is the zoning going to be improved if we do a yes vote? Well, I think now, after hearing town council's opinion about the potential for a two-year ban on bringing substantially the same zoning, without a clear definition of what substantially the same means, we're better off passing, having people agree to what town meetings vote to say yes and then work to amend the zoning while we're compliant. Because now we've taken away the risk of lawsuits, we've taken away the risk of loss of grants and the funding, the, the loss of funding to important programs that that could mean. We heard about even more of these each day. We're learning a little bit more. Today, tonight, we heard a lot more about the grant loss. And so I've thought about, okay, well, if we have how much time between February 13th and when we can amend the zoning to make improvements that people think we should address? And if it's a fall town meeting, then that's our window of time that we're at risk, right? So what are we at risk for? Developers submitting projects in that time period? Well, some places, these districts, we've talked about a lot. How much would we change those? So if a developer proposed a project, say, in the Elliott Street corridor, is that a corridor that we think is going to change significantly between now and the fall? Our fall town meeting? So if we think about Granite Ave, do we think that the owner of two Granite Ave, who has his office building or as a company has their office building leased, is going to immediately file to change that building into a multifamily housing? The state property on Granite Ave, that's not going to be a fast process. The state has a mandatory process to review internally before they even consider any sale or lease. And then they have to do a public bid process. That's not going to change. That's not something that's going to be before us, before a fall town meeting. So I think we are in a position, after having looked at this, we know where some improvements might be made. We've talked about, and some of you have talked about trying to do it for May town meeting. And I questioned whether we could really get that done in time for May. But getting that done in time for the fall seems realistic. So a yes vote would, would keep us compliant. It would allow us time to work on improvements for a fall town meeting. And it wouldn't put us at risk for legal action, for loss of grants, and also the potential loss of, for two years of being able to amend the zoning or bring substantially the same zoning back. So that's my short logic.
Thank you. And others?
I, if you don't mind, I'll.
Excuse me.
God bless you.
Thank you.
I may not be as sure, but I'm going to try. So of course, there's risk involved in yes and there's risk involved in no. And I significantly prefer the risk involved in no. And I'll explain. I don't think my position has changed on this, much like I don't believe Cheryl's position has changed on it. There's nothing I've said to Cheryl to persuade her. And I think it's fair to say that there's nothing that Cheryl has said to persuade me, although I respect everything that she says and I respect her point of view. And hopefully, hopefully throughout the town, those that are yes can respect the point of views of the people that have a no vote and have no position. And those that have a no vote and no position can respect the point of view of yes. We remain in a democratic society and we are afforded the opportunity to make decisions, much like the one that's going to be for us on the 13th. So as long as we all live and for the forever future of the United States of America, the state of Massachusetts and the town of Milton, we have that right. And we should make sure that we're all afforded that. Earlier tonight, so three particular issues by a couple of speakers were brought up tonight. And then in my response, I'd like to address all three of them. And one was preservation of character of the town, which obviously we all care about. Two was financial, basically loss of funding. And the third, I think, most significant was loss of zoning control. So in the course of a few, few words here, I think I'll capture all of it. First, my position remains as I have stated for months. I believe we should participate in zoning new housing. I absolutely believe it. I believe we should take advantage of transit to the extent that it's possible. That's how this whole notion of creating housing style to utilize transit, not just in Milton, throughout the state. I believe we should build as much affordable housing as possible and know what's in this current article does not do what I feel we're responsible, we could do. And I also believe we should zone responsibly for Milton, and I mean responsibly for Milton. I also believe we should have an internal town financial study of the financial applications by our town officials. I do not want to trust the financial outcome for Milton of any zoning, no matter what it is, to. to a consultant that is not going to be here, that is not responsible for a budget, and has no responsibility for the administration voting. I have asked for months for those that are responsible for budgets of our departments in town to be given an opportunity and to provide a comment on how they felt their departments would be impacted by the growth that's outlined in the paper. We have yet to hear that. So a few more things. The preservation of character. Of my opinion, the only neighborhood's character that was preserved was the Elliott Street corridor. We certainly didn't preserve the character of the neighborhood on Granite Ave, and we didn't preserve, you know, necessarily the character of Milton. This, this is not an article that preserves character throughout the town. We have an overwhelming result in traffic, which everybody knows if you put eleven hundred units along Granite Ave, near East Milton, the result is going to be traffic. There was no transit in that area, and that is going to be nothing but a traffic implication for that area of town. We'll have an overwhelming density on the east side of town, which I consider enormously harmful for the town. The financial component. Tim sent to all of us, and I'm sure you all looked at this email today. He sent a history of grant programs. And if you go all the way back to two thousand and twelve, there was a grant of a million dollars for Elliott Street. Since that point in time, the municipal vulnerability preparedness, the MBTA planning community, and partial grants, twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand, fifty thousand. So you have less than a hundred thousand in that grant program. The community planning grants, fifty thousand for the MBTA community's technical assistance in twenty-three, thirty thousand for additional MBTA technical assistance, eighty thousand, and only related to this MBTA zoning initiative. Massachusetts Downtown Initiative, sixty thousand dollars. Milton Awards, this is land use planning grants, forty thousand dollars. That's it. That's it. Earlier tonight, one of our speakers outlined a tremendous amount of money that I guess it suggested that we're a candidate for. There was no history of Milton ever receiving the kind of windfall that was mentioned tonight by the earlier speaker. No history of that at all. And to plant that thought in residents' minds that we're walking away from windfalls of money, I think is a very misleading statement. And by the way, a select board that now seems so concerned with financial opportunities from Milton walked away from two and a half million dollars from a very generous resident to contribute to the building of an anthill. So the suggestion that Milton loses zoning control, the state does not zone towns or cities. The state creates laws that impact zoning, certainly. And there's a process to creating laws that would then impact zoning. And that process is a legislative process. Our AG does not zone towns or cities. Our mayor does not zone towns or cities. Yes, laws can be created that dictate housing in any town or city, but there is a legislative process that will result, what needs to result, in the creation of a law. And we've heard the master of laws reference earlier tonight. That is what governs zoning. Laws get created that impact zoning of the two units. So I'm almost sixty years old. And I think from my earliest education, you know, through today, it's always been my understanding that our country and our Commonwealth is governed by law. Not by opinion, not by disappointment, not by dissatisfaction, just by the law. So the statute is specific. And the legal remedy are also very specific. And they're not subject to change because someone's disappointed with how a community complied or didn't comply. They have to follow the law. The remedy is very, very specific. I've said for a long time, I feel like we are an adjacent community. I remain committed to, to Milton, what being part of this group effort, our effort, to create zoning that does contribute to building housing. But I don't feel like it's appropriate to sow fear throughout the town and coerce the residents to voting yes with information that I don't think is accurate.
So are you suggesting that I'm promoting fear in what my comments are?
No.
Okay. I want to be clear about that.
Give an entitled to your point of view, as is everyone else, but there's an awful lot of talk in town. And, and I'm on on social media, so I don't see that talk, but there's an awful lot of talk that is, in my opinion, sowing fear and trying to convince residents that if they don't vote yes, terrible things are going to happen to Milton, terrible things. The state's going to come in and rezone Milton. We'll, we'll financially be in a dire state. It, it's just, it's, it's not.
Sean, can I just, um, one of the things that you mentioned was about the grants that were mentioned by an earlier speaker. My understanding was they're not future grants, they were grant history. The one point seven million, I had asked, what was that? And he, and the answer was since two thousand twenty-one for competitive discretionary grants controlled by the governor. And then on the.
The grant history was given to all of us by Tim. Now, granted, it was, pardon me, pardon me. It was five o'clock yesterday, Tim outlined the grant program history.
Yeah, this, this, the one point seven that was mentioned by the speaker was all, I watched the select board meeting on Tuesday night, and that was information provided by the town administrator. And also on the transportation improvement program, the speaker mentioned six point eight million for the East Milton deck. So that's not future, that's spent. Awarded for projects that aren't built is maybe what you're thinking, but it's awarded for the Squanton and Adams intersection, and for the Randolph Ave and Chickatawba. That's not at risk. So those, those are the kinds of grants that were used as an example. So I just want to be clear, they, it wasn't future, it was current, past, and underway.
And Cheryl, I, I will send an email to both Tim and to Nick Calano and ask them to collectively clarify this.
Okay.
With regard to those roadways, as I understand it, those roadways are under the control of the state. Is that your understanding also?
It's my understanding.
Mm-hmm. For, for Squanton and Adams, or the town in Milton put in a request for funding? I don't think that's state roadway, but I'm not sure.
Well, I'm, I'm.
No, um, I'm specifically talking about Route twenty-eight.
Route twenty-eight, one thirty-eight.
Those, those projects, to, to clarify, those are projects funded per the request of Milton Engineering or DPW staff. So, so those are all specific to projects where a town in Milton was an applicant. And to expand a bit on the specific tip discussion, I, I spoke with Ethan McFlan, manages the tip, and he provided the scorecard that they use for judging all of their requests for funding. Every program that they manage from bike construction to major roadway upgrades, we'll see a five-point penalty if the applicant is a non-compliant MBTA community. And any project within a three-A zone, a subdivision, say, we wanted to do more upgrades on Elliott Street, receives a three-point bonus. Typically, the difference between projects that are funded and not funded, according to the tip manager, is about one and a half points.
Josh, I guess the question I raised earlier is, what legally does the state have to raise to build? What legally? They, if I could, let me continue on. The law was, there's a statute that they have to follow, and I would expect to follow the statute. And if it's within the stat, if it's in the statute, then that's their remedy. If it's outside of the statute, then I wouldn't consider it a remedy.
So, so there's, there's a little bit of correction to make. So the law explicitly lays out programs that towns are no longer eligible to apply for. That, those are the masterworks, those are the, the major grants that are listed in the statute. Towns are no longer eligible to apply. There are a number of other grants that were highlighted in the updates to the regulations that are, again, not applicable. That power is still within the hands of the state. In addition to that, the state has every right in discretionary grants, given the fact that they are discretionary, to rank them as they see fit. And every single agency we've spoken to, Seaport Economic Council, tip, EEA for MBTA funding, has indicated that they are taking MBTA communities' compliance into account. So where one is an eligibility to apply, the rest are effectively, you will, you're welcome to apply, but it is highly unlikely that those grant applications will be funded. And I, I will also say that, that ineligibility is not the remedy, as you describe it. That is a consequence of non-compliant zoning. The statute says that we shall have zoning. So the remedy to not having it is having it, and it will be imposed, as the AG and Augustus, the secretary, has said, it will be imposed through legal action by a judge or a special master. As they have done in other cases.
Yeah, I, I remain, uh, I remain of the point of view that the harm of proceeding with a yes vote is far greater than the harm of moving to a no vote and creating zoning that's better for Milton. Thanks for the information.
I, I'm not providing anything other than just to answer your question.
All right. Thank you both. Maggie, you are, Jim?
Yeah, so I have a lot to say all over the place. First off, some may argue that the, the grant used in East Milton Square was a waste of money. And some would argue that the grant used on Squanton Street actually made things worse and increased our impervious surfaces. Because years ago, I reached out and said I would take over that island at the corner of Squanton Street and Granite Ave and do a planting there. So they had the opportunity to increase, the town had the opportunity, free of charge, to have a private contractor to come in and take it over and make it more friendly. And as we know, adding plant material is a traffic calming measure, and we certainly need it on that roadway. So to me, the no vote is an obvious choice. Our responsibility is to the residents who live in town today. It's not our job to solve the world's problem from our little local level. We're doing our part as best we can. But it's just not in our, it's just not our responsibility to take on all the problems of the world. I, I agree that there is a lot of fear that is being used to intimidate our residents. And to Sean's point about respecting each other's opinions, I personally received a, a voicemail at my place of business. And, um, and a previous spoke or talk, speaker talked about the cons, of the real consequences the town is experiencing. But I'll tell you about my personal real consequences, that I'm being harassed. And this person is a town meeting member, and I know who it is. And she left a message saying, quote, "It is awful that you have taken up this illegal petition campaign where you are promoting lawlessness and asking people to join you to put Milton out of compliance with the law, causing us to lose funding for schools and lots of other things. And to put your business name behind it is, is really disgraceful. And I think it's not going to bode well for you in terms of business, because me and my neighbors are shocked that you are flaunting this. So I just called to let you know." So the select board, you know, always is reading a no place for hate proclamation. They claim we're a no place for hate community, but this is one of the most hateful messages that I've received in, in my business. And I think these statements are unnecessary. And I think that, that having elected officials who, who are acting this way is an embarrassment. Again, um, back to the Attorney General's letter. I understand where the Attorney General's coming from. You know, she needs to flex the muscle. You know, it's politics. And politics shouldn't be scary, it's actually predictable. I find it interesting that she mentions that Milton has our own bylaws. But it's really ironic that she fails to mention that one of them allows us for a ballot initiative. I would think her statements about how she stands ready to work with us would include some type of parallel path that we could take if the bylaw vote, if the bylaw is voted down. She states that the cumulative legislative vote was a hundred and eighty-three to four. But she fails to mention that the MBTA law was buried in that three-thousand-page economic bill.
Yes.
The economic bill was passed a hundred and eighty-three to four. And I kind of wonder how many of our legislators actually knew about this MBTA zoning. Their main focus was getting funding for their towns. And my question is, I wonder what their vote would be today if the MBT law was a standalone, a standalone vote, as, yeah, and a standalone law. And maybe that's what we should be pushing for. There's also been much talk about what action might the AG compel. And the, I still think all the answers are fear mongering, because all you have to do is read the statute. Again, um, we all know that the legislator voted, and they voted for the consequences. Personally, I grew up in a time when I was watching, um, you know, Schoolhouse Rock and how do, um, how a bill becomes a law, you know, so that, you know, I kind of know my civics. I asked Tim to provide me with the legal principles or case law behind the reckless statements that are being made, that the state is going to come in and rezone us. And Tim says there's none. He says it's just all speculation. Because there is not any information that the state has the authority to do it, or has ever done it before. And because we're a home rule state, as a general rule, state agencies don't, or can't write a change in local bylaws. My understanding is that this law is a type of intervention that's not generally permitted. And I might not have gone to law school, but thanks to Milton Public Schools, I do know how to read. And there's just been a lot of misstatements the past few weeks, and it's reminded me of a story of Henny Penny. And Henny Penny is a chicken who, when an acorn falls on her head, she thinks the sky is falling. is falling. And on her way to tell the king, she meets many friends, like Ducky Lucky, Goosey Lucy, and Turkey Lurkey. And she and her gullible friends are convinced by Foxy Loxie to follow him on a shortcut to the king through a cave. And unfortunately, the outcome for the flock was disastrous. They made a fatal mistake. They didn't think things through. They didn't use thoughtful investigation and thoughtful analysis or deductive reasoning, and they basically did not use common sense. So I personally don't identify as a Henny Penny, and I hope that the majority of the residents don't either. And I hope that we heed the moral of the story, which is don't believe the hype and hungry foxes can't be trusted. So I am still firm in my position of that I cannot support Article 1.
Amen. So I too, I also am a no vote. And for me, it's a little simpler in that there was an article passed, debated at town meeting, and 3,000 people in the town signed a petition. They don't like it. That's a lot of voters. I don't know how many voters actually vote at any given election, but it can't be more than 10,000, it's probably not even five, maybe it's five, maybe it's six. Half the voters that vote don't like this. We owe it to them to take a second look at it. It's pretty simple. You know, as far as fear, you know, I heard Town Council speak before the Warren Committee, I think I have it written down on the 23rd of October, and give an opinion that, yeah, you know, the two-year ban is an issue, but there are ways around it with this Article 16, whatever he quoted. A month later, he gives a three-page letter stating that, you know, this is bad, there's no workaround, unless, of course, the article is substantially different. And I think our article is going to be substantially different, so I'm not too worried about the two-year ban. I think a no vote gets us a second look at this. I think this board, as we were doing before, can come together, can rewrite the article. I mean, Cheryl did it in six weeks. I think we can do it pretty quick. So I think if we vote no, there's really not a lot of danger. And yeah, the governor electing a zoning czar, I don't think that's going to happen. But I really think if we vote no, we take a second look at it, we can get an article that's much better than what we have now, and I think we owe it to the people of Milton to do that. That's where I stand.
Thank you. And I agree with most of everything of what people have said. I would say one of my greatest concerns with this zoning is, and I don't really think the residents of Milton, actually, not everyone realizes, that the article that was put forth, Article 1, was an intentionally diluted article. And I say that because it was diluted to the point where it could pass with a simple majority instead of a two-thirds. Other communities came together, found compromise, included mixed use, included increased affordability, used much further, much greater guideline, design guidelines and standards in site plan approval. We were really held back, and we did an incredible amount of work. Cheryl added, fortunately, sort of last minute, we were able to put some things in there, but we never really fully were able to do the extent of what this article deserves as the most significant zoning in the history of our town, to have something that is diluted that didn't have the strength, that did not have the protections that other communities have put in. I find it to be a very weak article. There's a lot of good things that are in it. As we've mentioned, we've worked very hard. A lot of the work that's in this is the work of the planning board and studies that we've been doing and looking at various districts. But where it falls short, and where I think if there is a no vote, or if it does not get support at the referendum, I would like to see us foremost, I think, focus on the East Milton area. I think that is, I think that is one of the weakest points also of this, is that we never really had the opportunity, like we did in the Columbine neighborhood, we saw that zoning, we recognized that district did not make sense, and we were able to pull that back and do something that was much more appropriate and a better article for the town. We never got that opportunity. We were in the process of studying East Milton, and I think there's things that we would like to change in that aspect. If this does not, if there's a no vote, if this does not go through, I would ask and implore the Select Board to really go back and try to work with the state. I think a no vote from the community will be, it will be a signal on different levels. One, that is really the fairness and the equity of this, particularly for East Milton, which, as a planning board member, our charge is to look at, we support all of our neighborhoods and all areas in Milton, but that there is a significant number of residents who I still hear from that really feel like HLC and the MBTA, that we have been treated unfairly. And this, unless there's a significant effort, and it's not that we have not tried, the Select Board has not written letters, but that people feel like the letters that were written were really lacking sincerity and lacking effort for us to really fight. Not that the Select Board is not in favor of additional housing and improving, because they absolutely are. This would be an argument to try to work with the state on having something that is more fair for the residents. And the argument that the fact that we don't have the land area along our train tracks, half of the area is in Boston, I'm not even concerned about necessarily reclassification particularly, but more of the reduction of the number of units that are being imposed on our town. I would like to see a reduction of that. HLC, this is very new and uncharted territories, but you cannot put a one-size-fits-all on these guidelines. And I think Milton has been put into a category which many residents, what I'm hearing, the residents feel like this is unfair, and they want the Select Board to protect the residents of Milton and really advocate, not that we're not advocating for increased housing, but that we're advocating for fairness and being treated fairly. We know our, you know, the service that we receive is far inferior to the other communities that we have been put into a classification with, and we are not like Brookline, we are not like Newton, we are not like Somerville. And Milton is not saying that we're special. It's, we're saying we just want to be treated fairly because we're different. And that, there's a very much of a difference of saying, we feel like we should be treated uniquely. It is because we have a unique service and we have a unique geographic location for our MBTA, which gives us a limited area for our zoning. So if this happens, and I've always felt like this isn't, you know, a Select Board, Planning Board, this is our whole town coming together. And so if this referendum, depending on what happens, I am committed to working towards compliance, whatever happens. Either way this goes, we've already, we're working on our economic feasibility, we're going to work on our site plan, we're going to move forward if we have the opportunity to work on the districts. So I am committed to that. But I would like to know that if this does not happen, that the Select Board will hear the voice of the residents saying, we have asked for us to continue to try to work with the state in getting to something, a place where we can be compliant, but that the residents feel like that we have been treated fairly. And I think that the vote is really about feeling like the voices that have not been heard, that feel like this has not been fair. And I know the Select Board, I would hope, would stand up in trying to protect the rights of Milton residents. And so at this point, I just feel like it's a weak article. It's an approach that different people say, let's pass something that we already know we're going to change? That doesn't make sense. And I understand, and that's why I don't want to waste time, and I want to move towards compliance, but I don't want to say, let's pass something that we know is a weak article and fix it later and come back, and we can always improve it. I just don't think that's the way a town of Milton has ever approached zoning. We don't just pass something and then say, you know, we can, we'll just change it later. I don't think we go into it with that approach, and I think...
I hope you're not implying that that's how I am addressing this.
No, but there have been many voices that have said, we know this isn't the greatest article. One of our speakers tonight said, this isn't an article I would necessarily support, but they're afraid of the ramifications.
I think that people are referring to the law more than the article, but...
And I do appreciate, and I'm listening to both sides, and I do hear both sides, and I'm very, I'm very aware of, I am a very risk averse person, but I do feel like this is worth getting this right, being focused on being compliant, but that we also continue to work with the state on doing what is ultimately the right thing for the town.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Because at the beginning, I talked about the risk. I think we also need to be honest with the residents about, this is a complex law. It's not solved in six weeks. We spent months and months looking at compliance models. What I did on the language was to look at design standards and site plan approval because that's purely the language. It's not the districts and the dimensional standards. As you all know, I studied, because I showed you what my analysis was, our neighborhoods and what is on, basically, the existing zoning and what is there, how it doesn't match the existing zoning, but what we have, so that we could design this zoning and those dimensional standards to be compatible with the neighborhoods. So I really, I find it actually inaccurate to say that this is not well-thought-out zoning and that people who are advocating for it are just saying that they're past something because we have to be compliant. I don't think that's true. I think a lot of people understand this zoning, especially after all the information sessions and talk that there has been about it. We spoke about at every meeting here, each neighborhood, including Granite Ave, and we all know that the requirements in the law, say 15 units an acre density, we all agreed not to include parts of neighborhoods that are within a half mile of the transit because they're historic districts. The law does not tell us to do that. We made that decision. We made the decision not to incentivize tear downs in those neighborhoods that are along the trolley because we recognize that they may not be a historic district, but they're historic properties as well. They are single-family homes. They are not a salt shed and a parking lot. We made deliberate decisions to protect neighborhoods, yes. What that meant is lower density in some areas, which means we need higher density in some areas. We've spoken about that. That's honesty. We know that Granite Ave is one of the areas we discussed as being a place that could take more density.
Not that much more. We didn't discuss that much more.
I didn't say that much, okay? We talked about other neighborhoods or areas that could also have larger lots that could take higher density as well. What we saw was, we were going to exceed our zone capacity minimum by lots of units, hundreds if not thousands. So when we talk about making improvements, it's not little tweaks, it's big discussions that will affect other neighborhoods just as significantly. And neighborhoods that, for example, in Randolph Ave, already have 240Bs coming along. Neighborhoods like near-town center, which has a 40B, an expansion at Winter Valley, a memory care facility, and a school, and a 40B on Blue Hills Parkway. Every neighborhood has multifamily or 40Bs that are coming. It is not, I think that when we talk about the fact that there's parts of town that have an unbearing or undue responsibility, I don't think that's true. We have to talk about each part of town absorb something. There's a high school, there's schools, there's a hospital. There are other resources besides multifamily and besides zoning that other parts of town share, everybody in the town shares from the benefit of, but more, the neighbors who live near them also have greater impacts. So it's just not MBTA zoning that we're talking about when we're looking at new development across the town. So I think we need to be clear. This is not something that's going to be, oh, the planning board, if they just got another six weeks, can solve the problem, and everyone in town's going to be happy. We know that everyone, it's impossible to have everyone be happy. So what we're talking about, is this a good plan? I think it is a good plan. Could it be improved? Possibly, but that's going to take a lot of work, and it's not something that we can guarantee that everyone will be happy. I think we need to be very clear about that, too.
Great, thank you.
Meredith, can I just say one thing in response? Cheryl, I think through the course of time, there were a lot of good components that were accomplished. There's no doubt about it. The real issue is 25% is what creates what we have in town. I think, I'm confident that if we were an adjacent community, would everybody be 100% happy? Maybe not, but would there be a significant chance that the town would accept zoning that could be created? Yeah, I think so. And I've said in the past, and you may recall, I was never even hard on 10%. You know, we could come up with great zoning that might be 11, 12, 13, 14%. I don't know. But it would be zoning that would be respectful of what we would want to accomplish in each neighborhood. So I don't want this meeting tense tonight with you feeling that I have an opinion that good work wasn't done. That's not the case. It was a lot of good work done, really good work done, that could be, you know, part of really good zoning. The issue is 2014-16.
Thank you, Sean.
And I would agree with that, that we've worked very hard, and there's a lot of good things here, so, but, and I agree, it won't be overnight, but we're already, you know, I think we can have an economic feasibility study that for May town meeting, we could improve our affordability just at that point. But, so I won't take up any more time, because I've already, I don't want to repeat what I said.
I think we can do the work, like you said, you know, we've done a lot of work, we have a lot more to do. Bring it, let's do it.
You know, the compliance, what we do is relying upon the compliance model. If you're not interested in being compliant with the guidelines, that's a whole nother story. So like going back to other meetings, where I've said this, we have, we should be clear about what we're talking about would be a better article. If it better means it's not compliant with what we understand to be from town council, likely to be enforceable guidelines, that's, you know, town council has given us lots of opinions that are not black and white, that are sort of levels of probability, and he's given us a high level of probability that the guidelines are enforceable, and he's given us a high level of probability that it's going to be difficult to do zoning that's not, that's considered substantially different. So we have to look at those because we don't have the black and white. So we go back to the question of, what would the planning board be working on that's better? Is it better in whose eyes? Better against which criteria? Better for one neighborhood versus another? You know, what, how is the better defined? I suggested that there be criteria that you measure districts by, and if we did discuss the districts with that spreadsheet, we would find that of the guiding principles that were all of us discussed and agreed to, that the districts that we have in Article 1 actually meet them in large part. Nothing is 100%. But if you start looking at other districts, you're going to need some evaluation tool, and if it's not compliant with the guidelines, then I don't know what the evaluation tool is. So I guess at this point, I'd like to make a motion, since I asked for this to be on the agenda, that the planning board support a yes vote at the February 30th. that the planning board support a yes vote at the February 13th vote, such that we remain compliant as a community and that we have opportunity with certainty that we can work on any amendments because we know that that is a possibility when we are compliant.
Well, seconded.
So we can vote on it.
Yeah. Thank you, Maggie.
I was gonna do it if you'd-
That's the right thing to do.
Yep. And again, I just, not to discuss, but just to say that I have enjoyed the respectful dialogue that every member has had and that we really listen to the majority, the minority opinion, but that, that everyone feels heard. And I just want to thank you for the respectful dialogue between the planning board members. So with that, we'll do a roll call vote. If we want to start, Sean?
Uh, no.
Maggie?
No, I do not support.
Jim?
Absolutely not. No.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And at this time, I'm not ready to support the Articles Dance.
So you're a no?
A no. So, great. All right. Anything else? I know there's a couple of things that people have asked to have on the agenda. One thing that's coming up, there's a lot of talk about the stretch codes, what's happening. It's really, the select board has now, I believe, voted to put that forth. It is, it is something that Town Meeting will, will be looking at. But we thought it might be good to put it on the agenda to sort of get a better understanding, the residents to know that, what is happening with this, the changes, what has already been adopted by Town Meeting. And we were thinking about possibly having, or I was thinking about, I haven't even talked to Tim, but having, or Josh, maybe having somebody from the building department to come and talk about the current stretch codes and really maybe how this would affect not only residential housing additions, but, but multifamily housing and future projects that we would be looking at in terms of what we would be asking for sustainability and to know what's, what's expected, what's required and what, you know, how we could really most fairly get applicants to move towards sustainability, but, but being aware of the costs and the impacts of, of that.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful because, you know, the planning board's rep to the Climate Action Committee. And there's a, as I've always said, Milton's greatest asset are residents. And on that committee, there's a lot of smart people on that committee. And so we are discussing that amongst other things, trying to come up with a climate action plan. So I think that would be a great idea.
So I would support that, but I also, speaking of that, would support having committee updates. You know, I think-
That was the other thing I was gonna-
Yeah, just the Master Plan Implementation Committee probably due to have an update soon. And the, you know, the, the duration of the committee is through, is until, I think, the fall, maybe October.
October.
Yeah, October. So I would like to give an update on that and sort of where the committee's not sort of finalized kind of suggestions and recommendations like were, would be required to in October. But just to give an update, and I'm-
So for the 8th, is that something that you would feel ready to do?
I'd rather, we, I'd rather have another MPIC meeting, which is not until after the 8th.
Okay.
So, so maybe the first meeting in March for MPIC. But if you wanted, if Climate Action's ready to go before then, and if the capital improvement, and I don't know what other committees do.
Maybe we could do both of those, that first meeting in March.
We're still, you know, in the process.
But I think it'd be interesting to hear what you're talking about. It doesn't have to be finalized, anything.
Yeah. And then that's another question is, you know, that I have as being the planning board rep. If they're starting to take, you know, votes on things, should I be coming back and saying to the planning board, what's the planning board's position on whatever we're going to be voting on? Or am I allowed to, you know, vote the way that I want to vote? But, but I feel like I'm not just a resident, I'm your rep. So I want to listen to everybody's, you know, ideas and reflect that back to the committee.
I'm not even sure what you're going to be voting on. So that's where a committee update and what your charge is, because it's such a new committee. I think just kind of the background would be helpful. And then, you know, to the extent that it's something-
Things are going to be upcoming. Yeah, and maybe we put that on, because we talked about having that on as a standing item. So if something is coming up and you have a heads up that is a vote that you would just want to let the members know, it's same for Master Plan Implementation, this is what, you know, and open space and, you know, we're in the process of working on that, which is exciting and it's all very good. But to keep everybody updated, I think-
And I'm the CPC rep, and we did make votes. So if you want to put that on the 8th, I'm happy to talk about that one on the 8th.
Okay.
And I didn't ask what the opinion was. But we were unanimous votes there.
I'll put on committee updates and whatever people have, but if they could be thinking about what they would want to say at their update, so. Okay. So it'll be on there if you feel ready or you have something to, so. Okay, that's all I had. And Josh, is there anything else that you had before we adjourn for the evening?
To the first point on the codes, I prepared a 16 slide presentation for this select board with Commissioner Hattu, A2, apologies. So happy to give that to you all as well at a later meeting. We'll also be hosting independently, like we did with the MBTA, community info sessions.
Okay.
Some explicit information sessions just for that before May. I have one other thing that the board indicated they wanted to discuss in meetings about MBTA communities was use of the town's traffic model. So we, Tim and I spoke with Jeff at Beta. The data needed to do that traffic analysis is number of units, location, and housing typology. So they'd be quite easily able to do a traffic analysis of the approved sort of zoning districts in Article One. But if this board wanted to do analysis of a hypothetical changed MBTA communities compliant zoning, the districts and the unit counts would have to be established before we did the transportation law.
Is that something you could have for the 8th? That, just that traffic piece? I don't know.
An analysis of Article One?
Of the current, yes, the Article One. I, I don't think they could probably do it that fast.
Yeah, and they need to be paid.
Do you know what the, the cost would be for them to do it?
Jeff didn't give us a firm amount, but in previous studies they did for traffic changes on Pleasant Street, it's between 8,000 and 12,000 for running the model and analyzing its results.
Okay. So would that, would that be, you think, like, East Milton would be maybe, if they looked at one street? So let's just say 10,000 for East Milton, 10,000 for the transit area? I'm, I'm just throwing out numbers, if you can ask them if that, just so we have an order of magnitude idea of what it might cost.
Yeah, so, so it's, it's more about the depth of analysis, more so than geographic area of, you know, to do intersection performance analysis. You know, that kind of more ingrained analysis would be a lot longer and be more tied to the number of intersections that gets analyzed. And running a sort of high level in terms of unit count and location will mean that there are sort of the fewest amount of assumptions going into that modeling work, which I know this board has expressed sort of a leiriness towards.
So for example, Josh, I, in the transit area where there's no minimum parking requirement, I know that some traffic consultants will do a, I know they have their standard that they use for how many trips are generated for a use, but they also have a factor that they will apply to that if it has access to public transit, for example. Can you find out about how they would do this? Like some of the-
So, so Beta would apply a trip generation number that, that number is like based in more traffic analysis than just, well, this is how many parking spots there could be. And so that's strictly the amount of cars that every hour. So there's, there's more that goes into it than just that, as you say. In terms of adding on sort of the relevance of the 215 bus, which runs along Granite Ave, or relative proximity to the Nephontown Greenway, that again is adding additional assumptions and costs, which Beta will always take more money, but it may not be worth this board's-
Well, I mean, the whole idea is that you, these locations are based on having these opportunities for alternative transportation. I think we'd want to understand how a traffic consultant would factor that in. I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't. We wouldn't be getting complete information.
Do they factor in the schedule of the bus? Like I know the 240, not to digress, and I know we want to get out, but like it was reduced, because my guys use it, so it was reduced from, you know, every 30 minutes to-
That's a good question, yeah. I think they, they, they do, but I'm not certain. But I, I think that's the level of detail that's important, because otherwise it's just-
I mean, the bus could run-
It could be anywhere.
The bus could run by, but if it doesn't run frequently, then it's not actually user friendly.
Well, for example, if, if a district were in a location that didn't have access to bus or trolley and they treated that traffic analysis exactly the same as if you did have it, then to me, that analysis is flawed. Because that wouldn't be helping us make a decision. You know, so if you're having a district that has 500 units, someplace that has to drive all the way through Milton to get to the highway, then you're going to be generating, those cars are going to be dispersing through Milton, if that's where they're going, you know, to get to the highway or to get to Boston or Longwood or wherever they're going. They have to make an assumption about where people are going, right? And so, anyway.
You know, I was just going to say, and I struggle with spending dollars that, you know, you might be spending twice. And I'm not saying that we couldn't be spending twice, but this is the kind of information that I feel is necessary to, to be able to put together zoning that we feel really, really good about. And, you know, it'd be really helpful, given what we already know about traffic in Granite Ave, to know what Beta would, would be able to tell us, you know, how the traffic would be impacted. So I guess I'm a little bit torn. I think this is information we're going to need. And, you know, I, I hear what Josh is saying, you know, if you either, you either do the analysis on this current article or you wait until you have something that's modified and do it on that. But if we had it for this particular article, it might help us avoid some of the, you know, negative aspects of zoning that will create traffic problems or rework some of what is going to create traffic.
Well, the other piece that could be is, you know, we looked at some other locations. We could ask them, what about these Randolph Ave locations? What about Fuller Village location? I don't know if there's any others, but like, because that, they're further away from, I mean, they're closer to 128 maybe, but they're further away from other assets, right? So if you did 500 units, 800 units, 1,000 unit zoning capacity in those locations, what does that do? Because if that's what we're using to help decide, then we should know, not just Article One zones.
Right.
Yeah. No, I agree. I mean, the traffic is a huge issue as it is right now. So I agree.
And, and that analysis will need to factor in all the new development, particularly the 40Bs.
Yep. And I'm wondering if that's something that we could actually study? You know, Quincy Center has been building a tremendous number of units. And I would be very interested in knowing what their access is. And, you know, Wood Road, I've seen pictures of Wood Road backing up to get to Granite Ave and all the cut through, through East Milton, how much of that is actually the, this, all of the zoning and all of the construction that's been going on in Quincy Center? They have to get to the highway somehow. And is that impacting Milton? Because I think that's a conversation that Milton should be having with Quincy. And, you know, they're, they, they do have a, you know, a great commuter line, you know, they're on the trains. There's access to getting into the city, but I think a lot of people drive and come still on cars. And I just, I, I wonder what that, the impact of all of that development is having on Milton and particularly East Milton and the access to Granite Ave.
I can tell you, I looked at the map and Granite Ave and East Milton Square are closer to the red line than parts of Milton are to the trolley. So if we want to look about, or think about what has access or the better access to public transit, that's not anything that we were talking about. I think at one time, we talked a little bit about the commuter rail station, but we never talked about. I, I think I was looking at it, it's just over a mile from the Granite Ave locations to the North Quincy Station on the red line. So I guess that would be access via quantum. But if you were-
The problem that exists with that is, and this is true, we see this on, you know, on the stations over in Elliot Street, there's no parking. You know, you, you could build an awful lot of residential near enough to get to North Quincy, but unless they're able to walk, there's no capacity to park over there.
There's some of the-
Not enough.
Yeah, I don't know about enough. They do have some, I mean, the trolley has none, basically, or Milton part of the trolley basically has none. Butler has a small station, Milton Station is small now, but- Yeah, it's, it's just something to, you know, when we think about regional, I think you're right. You know, Quincy has been undergoing a lot of development. I don't know what the traffic patterns are, but I think they can analyze it because I was watching, I think, Select Board meeting when residents from Governor's Road were talking about traffic and down Governors, and they were able to say that, I guess from analysis of the plates, that a large percentage of that traffic was coming and going through Milton.
I wish there were a way to find out of all those units that are built in Quincy Center, how many people actually use the T? You know?
Some, you know, it's-
Just assuming everyone's going to ride the T if they live next to it. What if you work in Bridgewater? It's like-
Yeah, it depends where people are working.
I would hope Quincy study, yeah. Okay. Great. Well, this was a very good, thank you, and we look forward to hearing or seeing a draft of the economic feasibility scope of work updated and many other good things. So with that, I'm-
So Meredith, before we, before we moved into the meeting, I just want to make sure, so on traffic and what Josh had told us about Beta, we're doing, we're not asking for anything. Is that right? Just a roll of the dice?
Well, I think it's going to take longer than a February 8th deadline. So maybe, Josh, if you could just give us a, sort of an idea on how, how soon that could, we could get that information.
As, as I said, it's dependent on what you want to study. It wasn't clear to me that you wanted, you didn't want to wait until Article One was decided. You may want to wait until you have a different set of zoning districts to analyze. Sean mentioned not wanting to pay twice.
So-
Meredith, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If, if at least as a follow-up to tonight, if, if we could ask Josh, just to ask Beta, if they would do, do the analysis on the current article, Article One, how long that would take? Okay. And, and the most high level analysis without those intersection?
Yeah, I don't think it, I would like to make sure they factor in the access to bus, trolley, bike. Just, and then if it's possible, just to ask them what they think about Randolph Ave and, and Fuller Village as, as locations, where that traffic might go, how that traffic might impact. You know, if you want to compare like traffic impacts on Granite Ave versus traffic impacts on Randolph Ave, you know, because Randolph Ave has its problems, I mean, I talk to people and they say there's traffic everywhere. I live on Canton Ave, as you all know, and there's times when Canton Ave is horrible. You wait for light cycles at the library and I can't get in and out of our driveway and so forth. And people will tell you when they- And people will tell you, when they live somewhere else, they have the same thing. So there's traffic is everywhere, it's generated from many different ways. So I, I, I really think that we need to look at the, I'd like to ask them their opinion about the capacity of particular roadways to take, you know, whatever traffic's generated by five hundred units, eight hundred units, a thousand units. So is a, is an Elliot Street have the capacity as compared to a Granite Ave, as compared to a Randolph Ave, as compared to a Canton Ave? Because, you know, when you're looking at where to locate districts, you know, it's, it's a factor. If it's a factor for Granite Ave and East Milton Square should be a factor for all of the districts.
And, and then also, like, back to, like, I don't, the forty Bs. I can't recall the update, the final permit for the first forty B on Randolph Ave. But at one point, written into that permit was no left-hand turn onto Randolph Ave. So all the traffic of that ninety-two unit had to go right. So, so everybody up on Randolph Ave was concerned because how are they going to get into Boston? So if you had to take a right out of the facility, you can't go on your first right, which is Hallen, because that's a do not enter, read, and then Hallen. And then, you know, then it's Hillside's the first right. So my neighborhood was like concerned about that, but then they're making UEs and into everybody's neighborhood. So, you know, finding out what the exact detail is on the forty B permits could be. And same on Blue Hill Parkway, you know? They have to go right and are they going to be then going left and?
And are they two cars per unit? Do you know?
I don't think so.
Forty Bs?
No, no, they're, they're not two. They're probably one and a half is, is my recollection, but I'm not sure.
So I want to be, so we're clear with. Josh, that's what I want to give Josh clear direction. For where we're beginning at this point, because I think we're focusing on all of our districts. But do we want to focus just on Granite Avenue initially? But I agree with you because.
I'd say just East.
Granite Ave is a.
I don't think so because.
Because I'll tell you that Adams Street has a backup problem because everyone who wants to go on the back way and bypass Squanton goes Galivan Boulevard. And so there's a huge, huge flow and backup that happens on Adams Street and two oh three on the access to two oh three.
I mean, I hear a lot of people in response to concerns about the impact of, to traffic on Granite Ave. They say, well, what about this street and what about this street? And what about my neighborhood? And what about my neighborhood? So I don't think it's, I, I would support at all just limiting it to Granite Ave. Because, you know, in fact, there's a lot of zone capacity and a lot of multifamily already in the Elliot Street corridor. And as you said, Adams Street backs up, I've said Canton Ave, people have said to me, Blue Hill Parkway, Blue Hill Avenue.
Randolph Avenue and it comes together.
Everywhere.
Yep, no, it's.
I'd say look at Article One as a beta, the whole thing, if we can afford it and if it's time reasonable. That's what I would go with.
I'd say suggest Article One plus the, the two bigger districts that we had talked about.
Yeah, and Randolph Ave.
Yes.
Just parcel.
They were the, the ones that I think MAPC studied and we could just use those.
Does that sound reasonable? And then Josh, maybe you could come back with like a, a price on what that would.
Yes.
Roughly be to do all, to do all of those, the MBTA districts. I think that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like there's an interest in the forty Bs. I, I will say, I think that is, that adds a level of complexity that add more time expense than you want.
Yeah, I, I think, maybe start with the districts.
Start with the districts.
I could probably just look at the permit.
Article One for now.
I think it's reasonable for all of us to say that if they just did Article One, we know that the forty B projects won't make it better. Whatever the analysis is.
I, I agree. I, I'm trying to say that there's like, there's some amount of common sense that you can apply to this. That should hopefully save you money. And I just want.
Yeah, I mean, it's just that some people in town have suggested that other parts of town, you know, it's not being equitable where the zoning is going and they're not factoring in other things that are happening in other parts of town. And that was my only reason for saying that, kind of looking at it holistically. But that's why I think also if we included the Fuller Village and we included the Randolph Ave, at least we'd get some snapshots from other parts of town. And it doesn't have to be the forty Bs, but those two could be helpful for that snapshot. So I'm going to continue to advocate for that.
All right, that sounds good. Josh, thank you for everything tonight. We hope Tim feels better. And I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn if.
Some of.
All in favor? Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.